Hey. Oh, it's on. Good evening. Welcome to the Scioto Township Board of Trustees meeting. Let's call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Clerk Flintoff, please call the roll.
Perry?
Present.
Yable? Absent. Flintoff? Present. Brandt?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Riser?
Present.
We have Coram also present is Office Coordinator Kristi Aiken and Township Attorney Mariah Fink.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the great honor of the President. One nation. In the name of the Constitution, the Constitution.
Thanks, Chad. I do this mess up all.
I abbreviated it. Yeah, allegiance, amen, thank. My apologies.
Onto adoption of the agenda. Are there any? Well, I, Kristi, I know you have an addition.
Yeah.
Want to go ahead with that?
I have an addition. It is Levine abandonment of an access easement to be added. And then the removal of N1, which is the crossroads tip. They'll be bringing it back to the board on the 30th of September.
May I propose that the Levine be added as K9 under the consent agenda?
Only if they allow dogs.
Add it, can I? Um. That's your joke, not mine. So Levine.
I, I would prefer to have some discussion on it just so we have understanding and we just received it. Otherwise, the public would have no awareness.
Okay.
Of what we're doing. Okay.
I would recommend that you do it down near the other planned items if possible. Because I think your LPC consultant will be here by then.
All three?
Yeah.
Well, should we do it? How about O1A? Because if it's possible. Isn't O2 a possible?
Close session.
Close session?
It is, but you could do something in session O2.
Well, anybody here for this item that we know of? Okay.
Here, what?
Present, you know.
Oh.
No.
Turn the mic up.
Oh, well. How, is that better? We heard some of us, yeah. Anybody here for the Levine property or the access easement? No, okay, then it, we can put it after O2, make it O3? All right. Oh, sure, and I have something to. I would like to pull the authorization to open bank account for DDA dissolution of Bank of Ann Arbor. And under, I guess, unfinished business.
Ryan's not here?
I would pose that if we could take the other amendments separately.
The other amendments?
This, this was approved as part of the, opening up a bank account is something our treasurer does regularly. As you know, the banks require a resolution. This bank account was already authorized by 2025-08. You know, if we, you know, I'm happy to, you know, if you want to move it to new business so we can talk through it.
I'm just, you know, yeah, I, I will.
I don't, I don't know if the concern is, you know, taking the action or if you just want to have more discussion about.
No, I don't, I don't want to have more discussion about it, but I, I'm not going to vote for it. I did not vote for the dissolution of the DDA and I will not vote in favor of anything that is connected to that. So if we leave it there, then.
I, I mean, I, I'm certainly supportive of, you know, moving it to new business or wherever you wish. I would just recommend this is something that legally, we are, a step we're legally obligated to take. Therefore, I can't support removing it from tonight's agenda.
I, I didn't say remove it from the agenda, just from the consent agenda.
Okay.
So is it O4?
Or N6? I mean, is it new business or old?
Could we keep the letter number, please?
We're, we're talking about K4, right, folks?
Yeah.
And we're moving it either under unfinished or new somewhere, correct?
N6.
Wherever Gillian.
N6, that's fine.
And I would just clarify, it will be named K4 and will follow N5. Thank you just for the record keeping, otherwise.
Okay.
I'll move the agenda as amended.
Oh, wait, Clerk Flintoff had something. Oh, but you can still do that after she's finished.
Right before David.
I got a, a notice at about 4:30 today from the county clerk with a proposed amendment to the countywide early voting agreement. It's brief, but I do need to bring it to tonight's agenda. So I would propose adding an amendment to the countywide early voting agreement. There are no handouts.
Is that new business?
Sure. Wherever Gillian wants.
Okay, so we'll make that O4? Or? Yeah, let's just do O4. And that's the, did you call that again?
The amendment to the countywide early voting agreement. Thank you.
Countywide, okay.
Now?
Yes, please. Okay.
I'll move the agenda as amended.
Support by Riser?
You have this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Then motion passes 6-0.
Um, one, two.
Yeah. Looking to my left or to my right, expecting Ryan to be there, but. Um, all right. Declaration of conflict? All right, correspondence received. There is a couple in there.
Hi.
Is there any more?
Are we doing anything about these?
About what?
About these alleged violations of the burning ordinance?
Go ahead, Kirk. Jess.
Um, the, the chief has engaged in a lot of activity about these. So I would defer to him for the precise status. I know our township attorney, code enforcement officer, chief, fire marshal. Others have been involved. It also corresponds with a record-breaking FOIA request, tens of thousands of pages. Of, tens of thousands of pages are regularly provided to this person and, you know, we're happy to do it. But I would just remind the board, 2025-05, earlier this year, we amended our burning ordinance. And so I believe that there's concerns about violations, but there's also concerns about our existing policy, that there's a desire that it be different.
Okay, did any of you watch the presentation yesterday from the state, from Eagle regarding open burning?
No, I have.
Well, I think there's a video on it, but it specifically talks about landscapers and how they're not permitted to do what the landscaper, at least state law, they're not allowed to do. From what I gathered, they're not allowed to do what they're doing. So I'm wondering, you know, why we're putting up with it. So.
But what kind of, not prescribed burns?
No, the burning of.
Yard waste.
Yard waste brought in from somewhere else.
Oh.
Especially grass, which is so, so smoky.
I, I'm sure the chief would be happy to give the board a full update on that. I think one and a half years has been spent on that issue and, and it'd be good for the board to get an update.
If I remember correctly, we updated our ordinance recently to reflect the state's. Statute.
To request, I'm sorry.
We updated our ordinance to reflect what was in the state statute. There was something, there was some wording that was, needed to be changed, but now we hear as umbels, at least I do.
Well. We have.
We did. Thank you.
These people just talk in a normal voice so we can hear. The mic is for, forget it. Talk, you know, talk so we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, we also have some, anybody that needs assistance, it's over on that table. I've never used it, I've never looked at it, so I don't know how it's, it's right over there.
None of us care, so it's not.
Oh, okay. Um, all right, everybody just speak up, please. Onto, oh, special topics. HR generalist, is that what we call her now? Manager, okay. Aurora Northrup. Introduction of Michael Blackburn for the consideration of field supervisor position.
Yes. Good evening, I'm Aurora Northrup and we do have a vacant field supervisor role and additional job offer to Mike Blackburn. He comes to us after 30 years of service, retired with the city of Dearborn Heights, his last role as a DPW superintendent for 14 years. Mike?
Hi, Mike.
Hi.
Well, yeah, I read through your resume, pretty impressive. You still want to do this, huh? After all those years? You must love it.
I enjoy helping out residents.
Good, thank you. Anybody have questions or?
Welcome. Welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is her, hers is coming through. Well, here, but out there, I don't know. Is it? All right, now is the time for public comments. Members of the public can speak up to five minutes on any matter. Anyone present, we begin first, and then please come up to the table.
Good evening, my name is Alan Lutz. I am the owner of 6921 Jackson Road, which you may identify as Help Design Build. I'm also the owner of 6885 Jackson Road, which you may identify as or recognize as Studio 3 Performing Arts Center. I'm here tonight to request the board's assistance with addressing a situation which the township staff and leaders are not providing a reasonable level of service. At least two properties to the west of my buildings on Jackson Road have improved their properties without having approved site plans or updated use agreements. Their improvements include clearcutting trees, discharging groundwater onto the neighboring properties and filling in wetlands without proper approvals of Scioto Township or the state of Michigan. On April 14th, 2022, I met with township planner Doug Lewan, made him aware of these situations. No action was taken. On April 15th, 2024, I submitted a 15-page formal letter to Scioto Township Supervisor Will Hathaway. No action was taken. Only after my attorney contacted Scioto Township Attorney Jim Fink was a response received on June 4th, 2024. Since June 2024, the township's attention and enforcement's actions on this matter have been painfully slow. I serve on a planning commission, I've served on zoning board of appeals. I understand that enforcement action takes time, but this is beyond what is reasonable. This situation has been excessively dragged out to the benefit of the property owner who created the violations and against my interest. The property owners have acknowledged their violations. They have not complied with deadlines which have been repeatedly extended. The township has still not required them to provide a revised site plan that would address these violations by any specific date. From June 2024 through June 2025, no one representing the township has ever initiated communication with me despite my repeated request. I've repeatedly requested updates and responses before any, anyone would respond or provide any communication. The responses from the township planner have been curt and often do not provide answers to basic questions. An amended use application went before the planning commission on June 23rd. An action item from that hearing was that a meeting with the property owners and representatives of the planning commission would be scheduled by August 31st. No meeting was scheduled and the matter appears to be tabled indefinitely. On September 2, I sent an email to the township planner, planning commission chairman and township supervisor expressing my frustration and requesting a status update. Over the last week, no one has responded. There is a pattern of poor communication across township staff, supervisors and planning commission chairperson. This is either a significant defect in business professionalism or I can only speculate that there may be an indication of something more significant, collusion, favoritism. I don't know, but this smells. Okay, the township is failing to effectively enforce its zoning ordinances. The message with this is clear, zoning ordinances in Scioto Township don't matter. I've not been able to further develop my properties because of this situation. Perhaps I should fill in my wetlands and clearcut all my trees. Okay, I hope to allow Scioto Township's processes to bring about a resolution. However, the lack of communication and action by the township has caused me to lose faith that the township can be effective. I'm left with no other option but seek assistance outside of Scioto Township's governments. I'll be filing complaints with Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, sharing the situation with the. sharing the situation with the media and filing legal action against the property owners and township. I don't want to take these actions, but I feel that the township is failing in its responsibilities and leaving me with no other option. If there's anything the board can do to improve the situation, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Alan.
Anyone else present would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Bob Stites. I'm board chair of the DDA. I know most of you.
Hey, Bob.
I was on the DDA for fifteen years, appointed by Spalding. Jay Holland sat on there a little bit longer than me, but I was on there a long time. I sent out an email on Friday about the weeds down there and it kind of spurred, a lot of people got copied on it and asked me to speak as well. It's interesting because today, if you've read the MLive article, there's already, there's a, Ann Arbor is having issues with their DDA too, which is common. After fifteen years of doing this, you know, I looked at a lot of other DDAs and there's always going to be some animosity between the trustees and the DDA board, but they don't close them down. They don't get rid of it. They don't get rid of twenty five to thirty million dollars that's going to come in over the next ten years. We can disagree on what to use it for, but you don't lose that for the community. I mean, I was, the meeting happened so fast. I don't think you follow the proper channels. I've got two attorneys that said you didn't. I'm trying not to lawyer up, just like this gentleman. But we, you know, I'd rather have you rescind that decision you made, write a resolution, and then restart the DDA. Get a new board. If you don't like the governance on the board, get a new governance. Don't end the DDA. That's thirty million dollars that could come to the township to use for everything. And again, that boulevard is planned to go down there. It might not happen soon, but I bet it'll happen in the next ten, twenty years. It'll be a new board, and they would thank God that you have a DDA to help fund that. I hope you reconsider that decision. Thanks for the time. Thanks for your service.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Anyone else present would like to speak?
Pat, the SIO Township resident. I fully support Bob Stites and his comments. I think it's a mistake to lose the DDA. I hope you rescind the action that you took a couple of weeks ago. Just so you know, the ceiling mics are still not working. I can hear mics. I think there's a, these two speakers might be working, but the middle ones and the back ones are not working. Congratulations to Brandon for getting our two utility department positions filled. I am very impressed with the choice of field supervisor. Well done. Tonight, the crossroads proposal, well, it's not tonight, it's going to be next time. The crossroads proposal for TIF is a mystery to me. I understood the state's brownfield program was intended to help communities clean up toxic environments and help protect residents from chemicals in those areas. Crossroads is not a cleanup site, so why are they asking for a tax break? All that does is help their profit. As a PUD, shouldn't that development add to the community instead of getting a tax break?
Oh, we heard that.
It makes sense the developer would make the proposal under the brownfield rules to add to their profit and save themselves fourteen million dollars, but I don't think the board should approve it. Thank you, Ryan. Unfortunately, he's not here tonight, but thank you, Ryan, for the crossroads memo and the agenda packet. You asked very good questions, and thank you for the data you provided. So the church shooting that happened a couple of weeks ago got me very concerned about, for the past forty years, I've had a first aid kit in the car. And, but it's a very basic first aid kit. And the thing that happened in that was that it was the bystanders who were helping rather than first responders. And so there's, it seems to me in this country that first bystander is an issue. And so I decided to do something about it and I, I got a trauma kit for the car. I talked to Lance Baird, Lieutenant Baird of the Fire Department. He helped very much with understanding what sort of trauma gear I needed. I talked to Chief Hood. And what I would like to propose is that we do three things. We, well, there's three benefits to what I propose, and that is that we do some classes. We do CPR, we do first aid, we do trauma. I believe Chief Hood called it stop the bleeding, and that'll do three things. That will bring the community together. It will help us learn how to take better care of one another as residents, and will expose residents to the fire department, see just how great our firefighters are. I think that the world is, is upside down, and I don't ever want to be in a position where I can't do anything to help. And I hope I never have to use anything in here, but I think the township should do training. I think the township should have some sort of a trauma kit. Granted, we have the fire department next door, but seconds count, and maybe we should have something like this behind the counter. But I hope you guys consider that, and make plans for some sort of classes for the community.
Thank you, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
Anyone else present that would like to speak?
I actually came to talk about the water rates. And there's actually something on Nextdoor and they broke down. I could read it, but I won't have enough time. I don't get extra time like some people. So, so it's on Nextdoor and I'll get a copy. Somebody sent it to me, actually, and I'm sure a lot of people look at Nextdoor. And it was basically saying, you know, we get the water untreated and it's X amount of dollars much more, and the guy was joking or girl or whoever it was, and said, you know, maybe we should get a water tanker, bring it. But we need to be updated. I know Kathy Noel has been working really hard on working with the city of Ann Arbor. And that goes back to two thousand and six when that board, one of the people on fix SIO was trying to remove, Bob Stites, that's where I do Ann Arbor point. And they were trying to remove us off a sewer to put us on a non-site sewer system. So that was a big mistake when they didn't build their own sewage place. Now we could say Ann Arbor's got, because at the time they didn't have enough capacity. That's why they couldn't build down that road. But Ann Arbor does have the PPOS and has a lot of things, and since, you know, I'm, I'm still following the Dino Drive, and even though we use taxpayer money to pave Dino Drive via the, the DDA, I wish they had paved my road before they disbanded. But, you know, I wasn't going to say anything about the DDA. A lot of good people on the DDA. I, I always liked Jay Holland and Gus, who runs the Coney Island down there. But they had a, they had a contract by the Finks drawn up. They could, they could have agreed to that, that contract. They did not. I watched all the DDA funds, and the, the big thing was to get the budget approved so we could hire a seven hundred dollar an hour lawyer to do that. Now, all that's kind of been smoothed away and I'm really happy about it because I didn't want to see the people's money used for an attorney to sue, to sue the board, and I, I think that TIF did its thing, and they could have at any time said, well, start putting on a new pump station. All I heard was back flows being paid for by businesses, they're fired and shoveling their woks. And, and then somebody was talking about, what contracts did the DDA have left? I think it's just the landscaping. So, and that's a three-year contract? I think it was. So maybe it's got two years left in it. So I, I personally, and I talked with Donna Palmer. She's a pretty conservative woman. Her and I agreed on that, that the DDA didn't have to be renewed in their mission. And the mission was completed, in my opinion. So won't win me any popularity, but that's nothing new. But I'll give you this thing about the water, because it is concerning our water rates. And I know the last thing with, what was it? Nance Castellano said that, that we went up ten percent, but we're above, but we'll keep that. So I just don't want to be financing anybody else's water pipes. Thank you.
Thanks, Paula.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hey, there.
My name's Nick Genova. Resident at nineteen twenty-two Oakley Place in Ann Arbor for over twenty years. And I'm, I'm here for one, more than one specific thing. One is the elimination of the DDA needs to really be thought about. We, SIO Township needs needs people to take care of the roads and so on that, that are watching it to help you help us have a nicer, a better community, period. And it makes sense. If, if you don't have a DDA, what, what are you gonna, how are you gonna take care of what they are doing? Add the expense to the landscape department, add it to what? It's, it doesn't make sense. But anyhow, I know I spoke to the DDA several times about safety in SIO Township. And any person that drives on Miller Road to, through the, the, the roundabout and to Dexter Road, if you know that space, we've asked for some kind of a light or wreck, something to help the, the motorists coming on Dexter Road, coming up that road, to know where the turnoff is. At nighttime, you cannot see it. It's black. The only way you find that is your, your lights finally hit it, but it's not, it's, it's not safe. It's bad. And it's, that's just one simple a solar, a solar light or a light on a pole. The pole is there. The structure that's needed to make that happen is already there. It's just putting a light on. And I'm, I look for safety, and, and that is a very bad corner. That, that makes SIO Township better. We're safer. We got, we're taking care of the roads. We're thinking about the people that live here. And to just ignore it and or to say that it's not needed, it needs, the DDA needs to show and explain to you again that this is a safety project for the betterment of SIO Township. And it's, that's, that's one area of safety, but that one is one that's really necessary. And I wish you would look into it, into the two things. Don't give up on the DDA. Doesn't make sense. Makes it like you don't, we don't, SIO Township is giving up. Don't give up. Keep us right. Keep, keep the streets and that looking good. Keep, keep growth happening. That makes sense in SIO Township. But the DDA is the, is the committee that can bring that to you and help make good decisions as to what should happen. Thank you for your time, and I do hope you really reconsider closing of DDA. It's not the right thing for our township in the long run. Might be, it might feel good to you right now, but not in the long. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else present would like to speak?
My name is Mark Smith, Six Hundred South Wagner, a business owner here in SIO Township. I'm here to request that you reconsider the disbanding of the DDA. As a business owner here, we look to the DDA and other tools to, to help us build companies, grow value. And I think a lot of times what's lost is the added value that, that the improvements bring to the township in ways of higher values, attraction of business, which again feeds on itself and creates higher value. You know, I've been in this township for a little over sixty years, and growing up on the farm here, I was, we learned that we had to use what we have, the tools in hand that we have. And the DDA is a tool that we have in hand now that we can really use to our advantage. And, you know, I'd hate to see us cast aside the DDA to solve a short-term problem when we're going to be coming back to voters in five or ten years, looking for another solution to build another fire station, say, out of the West End, when we have that tool in our hand. And the, the DDA can really work as an important conduit or other sources of funds. They can be advocates for businesses, and I think more than make up for any recapture that's lost in the schools through the improved or increased property values that they create. So I would just really ask you to reconsider. Again, as a business owner, I feel like part of the, our mission has been sort of abandoned or cast aside as we try to bring whole companies into the area and get them to take root and create good, solid jobs in life sciences and in, you know, tech sector, quantum computing. Those are the types of businesses we're attracting, and we look for, we need all the tools we can get to help build value and attract those companies to the area. So again, I would ask you to reconsider the disbanding of the DDA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Oh, thank you. Anyone else present would like to speak? Nope, okay. Chrissy, anyone online?
Uh, yes. First to speak will be Pat Stein, followed by Jonathan Reiver. Go ahead, Pat.
Good evening. I had no plans to speak tonight, but when I hear of all the people in, they were still so disappointed about the disillusion of the DDA, I really feel compelled to state a few what I believe are facts. I'm sorry, is there, are you not have, not able to hear me?
No, we can, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry, I was getting other talk. So, um, a few facts, at least I understand them to be facts regarding the DDA. I'm feeling like the people that are supporting the continuation of the DDA as it stood are really not hearing all the facts regarding these current status of the DDA. You know, that, that song comes to mind. What have you done for me lately? I'm sorry, but the DDA had a purpose, and that was the Jackson Boulevard. And that has been done for years, so their purpose is no longer, they're no longer necess, needed. But the other issue is, what have they done? Well, they have taken the carve-outs, meaning our tax dollars, and they have put them toward paying the fire department for inspections. They were paying for the local businesses' inspections. The businesses were supposed to be paid for those inspections. And we're talking about a couple hundred thousand dollars or more here. That, to me, that's not right. That was not the purpose of the DDA, to take our tax dollars and pave the way for businesses not to have to pay for fire inspections that were required. I mean, that's just one issue. The other one is, um, Dino Drive should have been paved by the businesses. They weren't. They were paid for by the DDA. Again, our tax dollars. That's very upsetting to know. Lastly, well, not lastly, but, you know, part of the conditions and requirements of the DDA is that at the end of every- is that at the end of every year, they were supposed to give the remaining carve-outs back to the taxing authorities. No, they haven't done that for years. As a matter of fact, it's accumulated each year to right at the point that they were dissolved. I think it was 4.4 million dollars they had in their copper. And, and then to know that when they had a, I guess they heard a rumor that the board was not pleased with their way that they are operating and so what did they do? They took $3 million and they were going to secretly purchase Quality 16 Theater. For what purpose? I don't know. They had the authority to do that, but why would you do that? So I'm, I'm, I for one am glad that the DDA has been dissolved. I don't see them to have been really serving a purpose for today. They have years ago when they started the Jackson Road Boulevard, but that mission is done. So hopefully the members of the DDA who are very nice people, but hopefully they can put their talents and efforts toward another committee and serve the township. So that's all I have and thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat.
Thanks, Pat.
Next up is Jonathan Greenberg. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Hi and good evening. I hope you're all doing well. There, if there's any theme here tonight that I'm hearing, it's that you guys aren't really doing your jobs. I don't know exactly what you're doing. I think a lot of it is power consolidation and making sure that, you know, your, your particular position is as secure as possible, but you're not doing the things that are helpful to residents. You're not providing the types of improvements to all the green spaces that we would like to see. You're not focused on roads or again agreeing with those who have acknowledged that the DDA, although I will fully acknowledge the Dino Drive and other issues with the DDA, it, it could and should still serve a purpose, even if it's a different purpose. It's a very short-sighted, control-based decision and it's not appropriate for Syle Township. And there's just so many things that I'm thinking of that would just never have gotten back to, like Park Road, you know? There's a lot of folks living here on Parker Road and they paved it. The developer did what they said they would do and they paved it. And now there's a big chunk of it that's not paved. What's going on? What are the plans for that? Why aren't we hearing more about that? And I'd very much like to hear back from you in your response time about Park Road. But the bottom line is you're making decisions that are hurting residents from your, you know, posturing around your green energy, 1.6 million dollars without getting a second bid. So you can say you have geothermal or instead of like a third of that for gas heat. Just really a lot of behavior. I haven't spoken recently, just a lot of behavior coming from some of the trustees and the clerk that just appear to be power grabs and probably just too busy with that to actually help the residents like the folks you heard speak before me. So your, your lack of action is hurting residents. Your focus on securing your role and making sure that you don't lose your role here in Syle Township government is hurting residents. And the way you treat each other is hurting residents. Good evening.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Anyone else that would like to speak at public comment, please raise your Zoom hand. There are no hands raised.
Well, thank you. Well, now is, we have some board response and Nick, or no, I'm sorry. Alan, oh, he's out with Mariah. Okay. Nick, just to answer, the, the, the board had dissolved the DDA at the August 22nd board meeting. So anything, or the 12th? Okay. Well, anyways, it, it's already been dissolved. So in order for a DDA to be, continue is for it to be recreated. I agree, roads are very important and the Road Advisory Committee, we are working on a presentation that will be in front of the board on October 14th, the beginning of many conversations regarding plans and funding. And also Park Road paving, that was from Jonathan Greenberg. Regarding that, we do have an $800,000 MEDC grant, but we have no other funding from the township. We do not have a millage. We do not have a levy, nothing. So where, that's why the, the Road Advisory Committee is working on a proposal. And there's something I do want to clear up. I was as the supervisor by statute, the, the, the CEO of the DDA, which doesn't really mean a lot. However, I did attend the meetings and the Quality 16 purchase was never discussed. I don't know where that rumors come from. I don't know who started that or whatever, but that had never been mentioned in any meeting that I attended. Another thing, the money goes back to the taxing authority every year, supposed to at the end. No, not unless, the only time that would happen is if we did not have a plan for that money and there was a plan. That plan was to for the Jackson Road Boulevard extension was one of them and then possibly a bridge or the sidewalk over the 94 Bridge. So there's some facts that are cleared up right there. Let's see. Dino Drive wasn't the only road that was paved. Medi, Medi Drive was as well, and that was a terrible, terrible road. I have a truck. It was a lot of fun to drive over, but for most people it wasn't. And I guess that's it. Yeah, because, okay. Anyone else? Clerk Flinton? Wait a minute. Okay. I'm hoping everybody can hear better. Are we speaking louder? Okay, go ahead.
Thanks, Jillian. Um, on Park Road, I, I don't know, Jillian, for your consideration, if the presentation on October 14th, if it might include some conversation about Park Road as well, like maybe, you know, needs or potential funding sources? Is that in the scope?
Well, yes, because of the whole broad, yeah, that'll be part of it, but not the A-subject. We have to talk, well.
More globally.
Yeah. Okay.
Awesome. I was just thinking that that might be a good chance to, to get back to Park Road. It's in our capital plan, but as Jillian mentioned, we've never had identified the bulk of the funding for it. So, so that's the main issue. I'll, I'll save my comments on the DDA for the discussion later regarding the treasurer's authority to open a bank account. He's been directed to do that, but that seems like it'd be a good time to talk at length about why the township is opening a DDA bank account. It was set, set forth, required by statute, part of the treasurer's duty. He's in fact required to do it. But we can talk more about that then. I would just ask, I'll note our attorney's not here, but just lag that I will ask if she could provide the board an update regarding the situation that Alan Lutz described. Certainly I appreciated his coming here. I'm not familiar with all the details of it, but I will ask if she or our code enforcement officer, whoever's the appropriate party, provide the board an update on that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Laura Kreps, our, from Carlisle Wardman, our planner. She does have a report in her report about the eight-point building supply, but it looks like August 1st, there was something and then there's nothing after that. So. Okay. Yep. Okay. Oh, sure.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. Okay. I don't know if they can. Okay. Um, I want to make some general comments about board functioning and board interactions. Sometimes we're going to disagree. And the township decision-making authority is conducted by the township board. A majority of the body must approve any decision-making, such as draft motions or resolutions. Agreement of a majority of the elected members is required for board decision-making. It's required by statute throughout state government and national government too. Members of our board don't always agree. In fact, diverse opinions should be welcomed. But a decision made by a majority of the township board becomes a decision of the entire board. And yes, decisions can be revisited. And I know several of us have had a discussion about the consideration of establishing a future DDA with new goals. And, you know, a different kind of vision, but that would, will take some discussion. So it's not off the table. I want to also mention, we had a decision made a while ago with another board. The GFL Trash Decision. Jessica and I voted no. David Reed, on our board currently, voted yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
To correct the record, I voted yes on the ordinance and no on the contract.
Okay, okay. I meant, I meant the contract. But we've all had to work together and I you know, every once in a while I say something to David about his decision, but we've moved on from it and some of that is a part of working together in local government. And even if it's hard sometimes, and it is, I've been in situations where I don't get what I want either, but I still have moved on. And I think that some of that has to start happening here. So I would ask all of you to give it some thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. You said a few, a few of us have had conversations, beginning conversations with DDA re-establishment or something to that degree.
The concept of a new DDA.
And who has had that conversation?
John Riser.
You mean here?
And at the board table.
I don't really remember a conversation. It was just a comment.
And, and at the, at the board table, I mean, certainly TIFs. In fact, you know, within a DDA, they can, you know, actually levy up to two mils within a DDA. It depends on the district. It depends on, you know, what the goals are, but, but certainly with three million sitting idly, I'm very proud to say that, you know, Ryan and I spoke with bond counsel and, you know, the 2.3 million in debt will be paid off by November. So there, there are, there are other ways to use TIFs. We're having crossroads come back and we all are committed to economic development. We just, you know, disagree on which tools to use when.
Yes.
Just for information, there was a question about crossroads and why a TIF would be considered. The Michigan Legislature, I believe it was last year, expanded the regulations for Brownfield to include housing. And that's how this particular property qualifies.
If they ask.
And just a brief comment. Rob, I know it doesn't go to your whole suggestion, but I am proud that, you know, Christie and I and the chief have worked together over the last six years. We have, you know, working in well-maintained AEDs. We have annual basic first aid and CPR for all the staff, thanks to the fire department. We have stop the bleed kits as well as overdose prevention Narcan in each of, in three locations around the township and all of the staff has a basic training in that. We also carry that all, of course, with our polling places where we have, you know, you know, plans in place for the worst. So, but there's always more we can do, but we are making progress.
Regarding responding to gun violence, I would encourage all of you to ask our legislatures to restrict guns because that is the root cause. It's not that first responders can't get there or people that are standing there or we all have trauma kits. That's not the solution. Assault rifles will kill a lot of people. That to me is the solution.
Being respectful to each other. All right. Anything else? Trustee Reed, do you have anything?
No.
No, trustee Riser?
No, I'll talk about the DDA when it, when it, when it comes up.
Okay. Well, let's move on then if we're all good. Approval of the minutes, excuse me, approval of minutes of the August 26, 2025 regular meeting?
I move to approve the minutes from the August 26, 2025 regular meeting.
Support Reed.
I noticed that the minutes for the closed session have not been provided to us.
You don't?
Yes, we do. We're supposed to receive minutes.
Sorry, I didn't even say anything. You said, yes, you did.
Well, you said something.
I didn't get a chance. Didn't get a chance.
Anyways, we're supposed to receive closed minute, closed session minutes to, are you still talking?
No.
Do you have anything more? Okay. All right. Supposed to receive closed minute, closed session minutes to the board for us to approve and hand back to you and put into a clo, into an envelope. And we had a closed session at this last meeting and of course, they're not in here, which is good, but.
So I'm, so no, I've never had that. I didn't know that was a requirement. I keep the closed session minutes in a sealed envelope for one year and one day and then shred them unless they're of course subpoenaed or something. So I will certainly confer with the council and I never knew that to be a requirement. That doesn't mean it's not, but I will certainly confer with council and start that practice immediately if that is in fact required.
Okay, the MTA page 28 closed sessions, the public body must still approve the closed session minutes at its next regular meeting.
I'm going to confer with this.
A page and 7061 of 2000. Okay. Well, thank you.
That's great. Thank you for that magazine article.
Okay. Is there anything that is, any changes for the closed or for the minutes?
Did you move their approval?
Yeah, by Brant, supported by Reed.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? None? Motion passes. Six zero.
I'll report back to the board on what the attorney and the statute says. So thank you for raising that.
Yeah, thank you. All right, now we are to consent agenda.
I move the consent agenda with the exception of those that we've polled.
Support. Okay, so who?
Motion by Riser, support by Noel.
All right. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? None? Consent agenda adopted or approved. I'm sorry. All right, so we are on to reports. So the regular reports, supervisor, treasurer, clerk, office coordinator, departments and committees.
Are we expecting staff either in person or via Zoom?
No.
Or reports?
Yeah, any reports?
No, there is a report L2 for the utility director.
I was just going to thank him for the report, the graphics, the data and leave it at that.
And John Horford from GCSI has provided interesting update. All right. Oh, do you have? Did you have an update for your schedule?
Sure.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I'll just email this out. I updated a running list of proposed agenda items for upcoming. for upcoming board meetings. At our next meeting, I'll also bring a proposed schedule of meetings for 2026 along with kind of key items we want to hit on. I do want to flag for the board in terms of substantive items for next time. We still had the potential for the presentation on PFAS at Dino Drive and Sio Chrysler. I just wanted to check in Kathy if we still wanted to pencil that in for September 30th or if you prefer that be set for a future date.
Future date.
Okay, thank you. Future date TBD.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
I just want to reminder, let Sio voters know that the Wasna Intermediate School District has called for a special election on November 5th, 2025. We're already hard at work. I expect we'll be assembling ballots next week. Anybody who's on the permanent absent ballot list, I should be mailing you your ballots on September 20th. That's about over 5,500 people. So we've got, great, we are still the votingist jurisdiction in the county and almost in the state, so we should all be very proud of that. We will not be having early voting for this single issue election, but no reason absentee voting. If anybody needs to update their registration, please come to the clerk's office. I'll be sending out a postcard to every household next week so you're aware of the election and the extra weekend hours will be open two weekends before the election and available all the time to help people make sure that they can exercise their right to vote. Thank you.
Sorry about that, chair. I did, I've been catching up on my, reading. Yeah, my reading and all my classes. So the Michigan Township Association, which we belong to, provides a monthly magazine, sometimes bimonthly. And this one was from August and, and the one for September is on the Freedom of Information Act, which I'm looking forward to reading. But I did make copies for the board and handed them out. There's also a copy over there and Clerk Flintoff, if you could upload that too. But yeah, I thought there's, there's information in here that is really good. It's about eight pages long and there's a lot of, not a lot, but things that I wasn't aware of. And it's just a polish, to help polish us on our Open Meetings Act because this is one of the statutes that we must follow. It was created back in the 1970s, I think 1976, for the sunshine to make government transparent. So this is a very interesting article and it's over there or you can wait until it's uploaded into the packet. Thank you. And our utility director, as I said, has provided a report and he's, the utility department is doing a really great job. I think you will, Michael, you'll be able to enjoy that and, and contribute as well. Let's see, well, no public hearings and unfinished business.
Having any other reports? I haven't.
Oh, I'm sorry, sure, it wasn't included, so.
So the planning commission, planning commission last night approved three ordinance text amendments that they'd been working on for quite a while. Those will be coming to the board. The three are language on accessory dwelling units, solar structures in chickens, and also the planning commission chair is recommending that the board create a transit committee for all things transit.
Okay, great, thank you. Trustee Reed, did you have anything for parks or? Oh, okay.
Okay, can I ask, trustee Brant, on those ADU solar and chicken ordinances, are the, is the process for them to have public hearings at the PC level and then maybe come up to us?
We've, it's already happened. The public hearings were held. The text amendments were approved last night and they come before the board. I believe there's a public hearing mandated for that as well.
Okay, thank you.
And yes, John, you may have chickens.
I'm talking to my wife about that.
Hopefully no roosters. Solar chickens? Okay, any other reports? No, okay, thank you. Let's move on to unfinished business and, no, not N1, we've removed that for the Piper Ridge conditional rezoning. Let's see. So this is just, it came in front of the board at the last meeting. It was denied, so this is the resolution of denial?
I move to approve the resolution for denial of Piper Ridge conditional rezoning OA number 25002.
Is there support? You have them, okay, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Under discussion, if any. I'm going to oppose this because I think that this is a plan for housing and relatively dense housing and relatively inexpensive housing, although it's all expensive today, in an area in which we have water and we have sewer. This is, I believe, less than market. I'm not saying it's affordable housing, but this is less than market price. Maybe the market price is what it sells for, but less than average or less than median housing. And, and we need it and to get multifamily residential close to Jackson Road where we have goals to kind of transform that into the next version or vision of a Jackson Road. So I, I might be in the minority, I probably will be, but for those reasons, I'm going to be voting against this.
Piper Ridge, I've become quite involved with this prior PUD. I'm in support of this because the PUD actually will get us higher density with the right developer. And also we cannot prioritize housing over the environment, folks. Our summers and winters are becoming upside down. That proposal would have taken the rest of the trees off that property and at some point, we have to protect and balance the environment with all needs. And that's why I fully support this.
Anyone else?
I'm agreement, excuse me, I'm agreement, in agreement with you, John, regarding housing, but not this housing. I think the proposal that was on the, that had been approved prior, unfortunately, I guess the finances fell through or whatever, but that's the kind of housing I think that we need here because that was a dense development and it, I think it saved most of the trees, although somehow a thousand trees got taken down. I'm not sure how, but that was not certainly a part of the plan. But I think we need a, a better development, not this development.
Does anyone know who owns that parcel? Is it the purse or the Piper Ridge? Do they own?
No, they do not. We wouldn't assume they'd put a conditional offer in. It's owned by a company called Seastone out of Omaha, Nebraska.
Okay, all right, you have anything? Okay, roll call, please.
And just to note, because we're not reading the whole resolution, but there are a lot of reasons and rationales set forth in the resolution as proposed. I would just note, there's a typo in the word resolution with the board's consent, I would fix.
Where's that?
Just the top. Just, there's one typo at the top that I'll fix.
Okay, yeah, I think there's something in the past that just kept coming up like that.
It's the same typo.
Yeah, it is.
It's total.
It's all caps. It gets me.
It's all good. It's all good. I just, making it clear. So per our rules of order tonight, we're starting with trustee Brant. Brant?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
No.
Carrie?
No.
Yable, absent. Flintoff, yes. Resolution adopted four to two as proposed.
All right, the next one is N3, possible action, nice of Columbus. Excuse me. OA PUD number 21005, PSP number 21012. And this is similar, a resolution just came in front of the board the last time and it was denied. And this is the resolution of denial.
Well, last time it was the planning commission recommended denial and the board directed our township attorney to draft the appropriate resolution of denial.
Which I'm going to support and remove the model resolution.
I'll support the motion.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote on that, please, unless there's more discussion.
I just want to note that the reasons are set forth in the proposed resolution with the one correction atop, similar to before. And and I just want to confirm, so two things, atop the word resolution as well as the word, is Columbus, I think Columbus as well.
Yeah, that's, that needs a change.
Yeah. I'll change, I'll correct the spelling of Columbus throughout as well as that at the top. So just trying to make the record clear, not trying to harp on typos, which we all, all make sometimes. Mariah, I just wanted to make, can you just explain procedurally why this is a denial of both the OA PUD and the preliminary site plan? Just why the preliminary site plan doesn't? Okay, it was all of the above, okay.
So we had a motion by Riser.
Motion by Riser, support by Reed.
Okay, go ahead, roll call, please.
Brant?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Resolution adopted six, zero.
And four, possible action, discussion on purchase of service agreement for transit services with WAVE and AAA TA. And this was prepared by Treasurer Yable, who's not here, but Clerk Flintoff will present.
Sure, briefly, we had WAVE and AAA TA before us at the last meeting. The issues are plain. At the rate that the contract was approved last year, at the rate that it's proposed before us tonight to be approved tonight, there, it is not sustainable. We will not have enough funding. The projection in your packet is from September 2024. Thank you, David, I know you, you jumped in on the issue and Jillian as well. We're getting better numbers from AAA TA and WAVE, but what I think we all recognize is there's going to need to be change to expenditures or change to revenue. The amount, the renew and restore that the board approved just last year, two years ago, that went to voters, will not be enough. We'll have a revised projection by our next meeting, but it looks like within two and a half to three years, we will be out, we will not be able to pay the bills on this. So this is a critical issue. As you remember, the costs soared last year, far beyond what had been projected by the agencies. And they soared again this year, far beyond what they had projected. So somehow, some way, we've got to get better projections and decide what to do, either reduce services, increase revenues or some combination.
Part of the increase is more ridership, especially with WAVE, from my understanding. But yeah, I agree, we need to do something because I, our residents reliant on this.
I, I will say that this illusion of the DDA will, will help this fund a small amount in terms of about 60,000 more, beginning with the December tax collection. But the, the issues go, go far beyond that.
On the other hand, the DDA could have paid for the shortfall on top of the, the mileage that it would have, if it agreed to return those, those captures. I mean, you know, it just, I'm sorry, it just dawned on me, Aurora and Mike, the consent, your, was under the consent agenda, which was approved. So if you're just staying to observe, but I don't want to keep you here.
It's a good theater.
Okay, sorry.
We appreciate you being in here.
Okay, so.
If I may?
Yes, please.
Comment about the DDA being able to cover the shortfall with the new numbers from WAVE, and this is, of course, unaudited. It's not the treasurer talking, it's just me talking. But it looks to me like an FYE, by FYE 2028, the shortfall would be $220,000. So I'm kind of doubtful that the DDA would have returned that 220,000 to cover the shortfall.
But they could have, they could have contributed more because most of the, the service is within the DDA.
But, okay, I'm just telling you. Okay.
All right.
So the, the, you know, Ryan did a nice job of trying to come up with, it's rather long model motion. I don't know if it's sufficient, frankly, giving, given the seriousness of this situation. I, I do think we should, we, we've talked to them and, and they feel that they would need to make service adjustments through either an amendment of this posa or in a subsequent posa. But they are urging us, and I do concur, that we should approve this posa as proposed tonight, but add some very serious conditions. And that's what Ryan was trying to set forth here. I, I think that second paragraph there to, you know, direct the project manager to write and deliver a letter that says we intend to spend no more than 626,000. I appreciate the intention. I, I don't think that's kosher, given that we would be signing a contract for more than that. I, I don't know, Mariah, if, if the treasurer had an opportunity to chat with you about that, but I'd be uncomfortable, you know, approving a contract for 856, but saying we're not going to spend any more than 626. That doesn't feel right to me.
That's in future periods.
Right, which.
Oh, okay. Twenty seven and twenty eight. Oh, I got you.
The intent is that we would pay the higher amount now, but mandating that they reduce their costs.
I got you. I'm sorry that I misread that.
That's okay.
And the, the transit committee that has been proposed for us to create, I'm assuming that they would be looking at all of the numbers and.
Yeah, Christie, Christie and Ryan are working together on that proposed committee charge for next meeting, but I, I would just remind us, we, we had a committee and we tried to get it right and, and we got it wrong. So we need to do better next time.
Absolutely. Well, I'm thinking that, so this.
And yes, I'm using the collective we.
This, okay. Should this, this part of the, the motion regarding the additional, additionally to direct the project manager and all of that, should that be with the, the transit committee or should? I don't know.
I don't think we need to consider the transit committee in this motion. I think we could, yeah, come up with a committee at the next meeting to operationalize it. I'm, I'm just saying, what we're doing is, let's be explicit, we are kicking the can. I'm I'm just saying, what we're doing is, let's be explicit, we are kicking the can down the road to next year. I I would say the no more than, you know, six hundred and twenty six thousand, I I wonder if we could make that a little more approximate, I don't think we're super firm in that number. But if there'd be a way to make that a little more flexible. I mean, we could even say no more than projected revenues.
It just says intend, so we can always change it as we see fit, wouldn't you think if it says intend to spend no more?
Okay.
So, and I assume this is based on projected revenue. I mean, I I appreciate your, your.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, no, I think it's okay because it says intend. Those numbers are going to change a little bit. And I I think the letter needs to come from an official and not a staff person. I'm happy to be directed by the board if somebody needs to write it.
I would, if you're making a friendly amendment to replace clerk with project manager, I would support that.
Okay.
And it says, when is their fiscal year, is it July?
October one.
October.
Follows federal.
This is within the letter direct, well, they have a purchase of service agreement no later than six thirty twenty twenty six. Should, why not have it before our fiscal year begins? Because then that way we know what to budget for, or, I mean, what what's the purpose of the the June thirtieth?
I believe it was to give you ninety days before your, before your other contract expires to consider, because these have been coming really close to the expiration date.
So the kind, their, the contract that they provide to us is that aligns with their fiscal year?
Yes. And that's a federal, that's federally driven.
I would be concerned if we made it earlier that their projections are not going to be that good. We have numbers here to to budget from.
Yeah.
So how much did we budget the beginning of this fiscal year and what are they, how much is different than what we thought?
I'll I'll pull that, so we have the projection with actuals through September twenty four, but I can bring an update with the actuals from this year.
Okay.
But we're far, far beyond where we need to be. So no later than, so we would get the service needs and fiscal requirements by May. I I think that's fine, we'll just know we'll do our best during budget season and we'll know that we'll have a major budget amendment to this fund. And certainly at any time if this boards determines it wants to raise revenue dedicated to bus fund or other purposes, it would still have time, it's just that if if this board were to consider if it wants to put a transit millage out there, I'm not inclined to, but if we find we decide to and need to, I would want to think about the election calendar there. So, because twenty twenty six would probably be the time to do it, August or November.
Okay, well, you're good with the language here? Is there support for this?
I'll make a motion with the friendly amendment to direct the clerk instead of the project manager.
I'll support.
Okay. I guess all in favor say aye.
Actually, could we do a roll call?
Sure. Fine with me.
Brandt?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Motion adopted six, so.
N five, possible action retainer agreement with CIO Township lobbyist GCSI. And I believe trustee Noel?
Yeah, I can address this. John Horford presented at our last meeting. And he's from GS, GCSI, he has been on this account for the last year and a half. He gave us a recap of some of the work that G GCSI has done on CIO's behalf. We had extensive discussion at the last meeting about the pros and cons of renewal of the GCSI contract. John has modified the contract and added a specific description of the duties that he would perform that was lacking in the prior contract. And there has, there has been an issue identified, questions about the retainer agreement and the indemnification provisions contained in the retainer agreement. So Mariah, I'm going to ask you to talk about this a little bit, but it is paragraph three point three. And I'm asking, I'm not sure, because indemnification is mentioned later in the contract, too.
So I don't have an issue with paragraph three point three indemnification.
Okay.
Because that's GCSI indemnifying township. Except for CIO's sole negligence for personal injury, direct damage, or tangible property, nothing in this agreement shall be construed as a waiver of CIO's governmental immunity. Okay with all of that.
Okay.
It's under paragraph five point one, costs and expenses. The first part of that paragraph is fine, and then about halfway down, there's a sentence that starts in addition, and then it's CIO shall indemnify. And I would take that and the entire rest of that paragraph out. This is, this will not be a new conversation with GCSI from our law firm. We have discussed this with them before and we've removed similar indemnification language. I think it just was in there from some previous template.
And I spoke to John late in the afternoon today. We discussed this and I said, we're still, we'll put it on the agenda, subject to attorney approval, but he thought it was going to be fine removing this provision. But we'll have to send it to him tomorrow and communicate it with him. So, subject to attorney approval, you know.
I have a small point and then a larger point. I'm noticing it's proposed to start on September first. Their services, we have paid them through August ninth, and they have that odd, you know, tenth to the ninth billing cycle, so I want to make sure that if the board were to approve this tonight, that it might be retroactive to August tenth.
And what we just paid was approved.
Through August ninth?
Oh, through August.
Huh. I would suggest we get GCSI to change their billing period to not have this confusion.
From the. This contract is the first of each month.
I don't know why they're billing a different period.
Sure, I just, I just thought it might be helpful if the board were to approve this tonight. I mean, certainly, there there's nothing, we don't need to change it if if the board wants to go September one, it's just know that on September thirtieth, we'll have another invoice out of contract. We've been doing that for a few months, but.
Well, Mariah, what do you recommend?
So the, I guess I'm confused about the issue, the issue is that they bill through August ninth, so you've got this August tenth through September first.
Correct.
Still come.
Yep.
And and you want to lock them into the thirty three hundred for that period?
I believe it's the same amount. So e- either way, it's just we're gonna, they're gonna be billing us, well, I just don't want to have to haggle with them, you know, about prorating down their August tenth through September ninth bill.
I mean, this says that the billing period is on the first of August, so.
Correct, but this says effective the first of September. So what happens to their August tenth?
Yeah.
Well, they're gonna send, I would assume they were sent, they would send you a bill for that period of August that is separate from, maybe that starts on September.
Okay, I hope so, thank you. I will keep an eye on it.
Is that it? No charge either, since it's September.
Or Flintoff, go ahead.
Um, yeah, and just the larger, I want to thank Kathy for all your work on this. I do really appreciate it and I appreciate your trying to figure out how we can really maximize our resources because we're all committed to leveraging different funding sources and being more proactive from a policy point of view. I I remain unsupportive of this tonight because I think, as as has been the case for a couple of years, but hasn't been resolved at least enough, is that I just don't think that it is a good enough use of township resources. I hear the arguments about, you know, getting some funding sources, I also know that we have good relationships with our legislators. I also don't think that there will be earmarks this year or maybe next, but certainly not this year. I appreciate the additional language that GCSI, probably through your advocacy, Kathy, offered in paragraph three point four, in terms of like specking out some services. I still don't think that there's sufficient to demand thirty three hundred dollars a month, as we see in the annual required lobbying report. You know, less than ten percent of their time is actually spent lobbying, so I won't be supporting this tonight. But whatever the board decides, I'm, of course, happy to implement and happy to support whatever policymaking or going after grants if the board decides to go forward with this.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have comments.
Sure, go ahead, I'll start with you then.
I have two major points I would like to make. For the past four years, the federal and state governments have provided multiple funding opportunities, we had ARPA, we had IRA, we, there was money to be had for the for the past four years. And as my grandmother used to say, even a blind squirrel finds a nut once in a while. So I'm, I don't, I don't, do not see that pattern continuing for the next four years. So I don't think it's a wise use of our money. And my second point, and this is a personal opinion, as a progressive Democrat, I don't do not agree with wealthy communities taking fun, funding beyond their needs that clearly takes it away from communities that have greater needs. A community that I grew up in, Ben Harbor has the same water problems as Flint, they have tremendous funding issues, they will never have the money to hire a lobbyist. And great for wealthy communities, but I I, it's unsettling to me to support an action that is not an equitable distribution of government funding.
Trustee Reed, do you have, trustee, Brandt, are you finished?
Oh, no.
They didn't want to, yep. Trustee Riser?
No, I'm going to be voting in support of this.
Okay, um, I'm in support of this as well, but Kathy, I thought, and I know this wasn't a board decision, but we have been tossing this around, having a subcommittee that is, that creates a plan to provide to GCSI, and I thought that's what was going to be included with this.
No, that's, we didn't discuss that specifically because we have yet to conclusively identify the subcommittee. We have two members who've been, me and David Reed.
I started a list.
Okay, I was hoping Kathleen would join the committee, but it doesn't sound like it. So. Not if you want to get money. We're going to be talking.
You can bring a committee proposal back.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that, we'll bring a committee proposal back.
A charge.
Yeah.
Yes, and that's what I wanted to see before we approve this or not, and yes, a plan. And I just feel like this is, I just don't want to see us in the same position before and then us saying, oh, GCSI doesn't do anything for us, and we wasted, you know, a lot of money.
Well, you, all of you can be involved and proactive and push us to do more. I mean, that can happen. It's happened in other areas.
Yeah, and we had a subcommittee, well, an official with Judy Monk, you and I, and we were.
You could be welcome on the subcommittee.
It's not part of my statutory duties, I have too many other things.
You got to identify these statutory duties for us.
I have already done that and provided to the compensation commission, which you all had supposedly watched.
Well, I need a refresher.
The thing is, is that here we are again without having a a subcommittee with clear plans, and we're, we're here to make a decision on a contract that is a lot of money. And again, I am in support of the lobbyist working on behalf of CIO, but again, we need to have a plan.
Are you suggesting that we postpone this until we have a plan and a team in place?
Yes.
Because it's the two year, the two year term. However, either party may terminate this agreement for any reason or no reason by providing written notice to that effect not less than thirty days prior to the termination date. So we've got a, we've got a thirty day out on this, is that right, counsel? I'm looking at the term on six dot one. The term shall be twenty four months and then month, month thereafter, notwithstanding either party may terminate this agreement for any reason or no reason by providing written notice to that effect not less than thirty days prior to the termination date. So we, we could say, well, we can't decide which three of us are going to meet, so we're, we might as well just put the kibosh on it in thirty days. So we have that as an option, I would say, Jillian, you know, six dot one, as an, as an escape clause. And if, and if this gets passed tonight, yet trustees, the majority of which are not satisfied with the service provided, the information provided, the communication that they receive, they can always, you know, invoke that six dot one termination clause.
Well, how about I? I have a suggestion. Right. How about a motion to table this until the next meeting with a plan presented along with this? A plan, subcommittee, whatever.
Did we not have a motion on?
No.
There is no motion.
Okay, thanks.
Jillian, would you please say that again?
Okay. A motion to table this until the next meeting and this be brought back, presented along with a plan, subcommittee, whatever else needs to be included in order for this to be, you know, effective when we do utilize GCSI.
So a committee plan, something.
A committee comma, a plan, reporting requirements, I would think something along those.
Sure.
I don't know, but.
We, we talked about it last time and.
So we have a motion by Carrie?
Is there support?
May I make a comment?
Sure.
I mean, I, I just don't support it because I'm, I'm opposed to the.
The whole.
Yeah. I I personally don't think another two weeks would, would move this forward, it's been a problem for years.
And I'd support it, and I'm willing to be part of the committee if asked, I'm willing to come up with ideas for like, how, how do we best use GCSI? And how do we communicate more than just the standard, you know, report that they provide to other municipalities? Like some SIO-specific things and what, what lobbying opportunities are there, what funding opportunities are there? And I'd be willing to be part of that, and then how do we best communicate that? Or how does GCSI best communicate that to the board so that we're, have some better confidence that we're getting our bang for the buck? I, I'd be willing to be part of that solution going forward if this passes tonight, but I'm gonna vote in favor of this if, if, if it's moved before this body.
So John, you're saying you're willing to be on this committee?
Yes, I am saying, saying, but I'm not broken if I'm not, but yes.
Well, I think that would be good if you would be on it.
And I would just say any committee.
Any committee would, of course, need to come before the board. There are no committees unless they're established by the board, so a brief charge, what the committee charge is, the members, I assume would be forthcoming.
Yes.
And, and I'll say in particular on this issue, I know, I know, it's, but, but to be consistent with other things, but on this issue in particular, and I'll, I'll just say as a parent of a Lakewood Elementary, you know, student, you know, I witnessed almost firsthand, too close for comfort, at drop-off, the ICE kidnapping of the father dropping off their student, okay? So I'm gonna say this again, because we've talked about this with GCSI at this table. GCSI is about making money. They work for anybody. They bend over backwards, no matter what the policy. They say, we work with Republicans and Democrats. We are so far beyond that, okay? This, he was, I did not like the way that requirement came down for us when it initially came up that we were gonna have to have a written requirement stating that SIO Township will not, you know, cooperate with immigration or adhere to quote-unquote gender ideology, which I believe is feminism and gender equality and any of that stuff. So I just want to say, I don't trust GCSI as far as I can throw them to be upfront with us about what requirements might exist for these earmarks during this time. So I'm just gonna say, repeat myself, say, my expectation of my colleagues here is that if any such requirement is even intimated, that you will bring it to this board table for a public discussion and vote on it.
Those weren't GCSI requirements, though. That was, was the House.
It was the House, and I'm sure they're gonna get worse. We've seen their budget and we see where they're going. But what I'm saying is, I did not like the way GCSI tiptoed around it. I did not like the way, you know, that's just the farm, okay?
And actually, they were not forthright in a reasonable amount of time to tell us that many, many other municipalities were refusing to do this and it was no longer a requirement.
That's right, because he wanted us to play nice, and we are so far beyond that. So I, for one, am not willing to, you know, capitulate to this oppression in order to get an extra buck for SIO.
It sounds reasonable. I would like to also add that this board, the prior board, has never set priorities for what these lobbyists should be doing, and that's very unsettling. So if this is passed, I would request an amendment to the motion that says this board meets within some timeframe to set those priorities, very simple process. We can list what potential funding opportunities we're interested, for example, safety, public law, law enforcement, fire, public infrastructure, water, sewer, transit.
Roads.
Roads.
But not at the expense of schools and Medicaid, which is what's currently proposed.
Right.
Well, would, would the subcommittee create that and bring it to the board or?
We can, if we're directed to.
Okay, so could we?
If you exist.
Yeah, if you exist. So when are we going to, can we have two model motions here then? One for approving or not this?
We can have as many motions as someone makes.
And then another motion for the subcommittee.
And then another motion for setting priorities, if you want to go that way.
Yeah, we could put it all together.
Uh, that would be good.
I would, I'm in favor of this, but only if there is a plan.
So I would support your motion if that relates to support your motion to put her out, lots, to get this stuff figured out.
So there's support by Riser.
But, yeah, 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 I don't mind to, yeah.
So the supervisor's motion was to table this until the next meeting and that this be presented alongside a committee plan, reporting requirements, et cetera. I heard you say next month, John. Was that a friendly amendment?
It was another gentleman.
You want a moment?
Am I right?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that supported by Riser and Carrie?
It is.
Yes.
That would be our October 14th meeting?
Yes.
We have a couple of weeks in between this meeting and the next meeting, so that would be even on time.
Are you okay with that, David?
Yes.
Are you okay with that, David?
I thought you said, okay, then. You said, David, my.
I'm charged. Okay, so we have two motions?
We have one motion.
One motion.
Oh, so we're combining, oh, wait a minute.
We have one motion.
Because this, this will be tabled until one, okay, go ahead. Could you read it out loud?
Sure. A motion by Carrie, support by Riser, to table this item until the October 14th regular meeting and that this be presented alongside a committee plan and reporting requirements, et cetera. I would request a roll call, though.
I would request a roll call.
Yes.
Hold up.
Then we all will. It's all due. Go ahead.
Brant?
No.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Flintoft, no. Motion passes 4-2.
Thank you.
K4?
Yeah, well, yes, K4 after N5. So this is possible action authorization to open bank account for DDA dissolution at Bank of Ann Arbor.
And in the treasurer's absence, I'm happy to speak to this since we discussed this item, but what are your questions, supervisor?
I don't have questions. I'm just gonna vote no.
Okay, I'd be happy to provide some background. This is a legally required activity of our treasurer to open bank accounts. It's a normal activity of our treasurer. I think the, if the board wants to have more management of which bank accounts our treasurer opens, that can be accomplished through our investment and depository policy. Certainly, that's something that's coming up for revision. As you know, we had up to 26 bank accounts. This is just another bank account that he has determined needs to be opened. The reason why you're seeing it on, normally, he just doesn't. The reason why you're seeing it on the board agenda was because of me. When I'm asked to sign something, I read it, and it said, this has been, this bank account opening, Bank of Ann Arbor, any of you who have opened business accounts there, government accounts there, it says this resolution has been adopted by the governing body on such and such a date. So Ryan and I conferred with our township attorney, and they suggested that Ryan just put it on the consent agenda in order to get that board approval. So going forward, you're gonna see a lot of these as he opens new bank accounts. In terms of why this bank account, as you know, he's required to open this bank account in terms of ordinance 2025-08, which dissolved the DDA. I'll direct you to item 5 in our adopted ordinance. The cash currently held by the DDA, which shall include any cash invested as allowed by law, shall be transferred to the Township Treasurer. It's currently in Jennifer Tonkano's name. She is the treasurer of the DDA. The DDA no longer exists, so it's sort of in Never Never Land. That's why the statute requires, and our ordinance affirmed, this mandatory step that the treasurer needs to take to transfer it into his name, as all township money is in our treasurer's name, who will deposit it into a segregated account in a financial institution approved by him for the payment of any DDA liabilities that may be invoiced within the next three months and any long-term liabilities. And he's not obligated to cancel, withdraw any investment, et cetera. As, as we know, the DDA has about 6 million in cash, had about 2.3 million in outstanding bonds. Great news. Since adoption of 2025-08, the treasurer and I spoke with bond counsel and Bendinsky, and we will be paying off, the treasurer will be able to pay off the bonds by November. So we'd been, had 6 million in cash, 2.3 million in debt. Finally, that will get paid off with no penalty.
No further interest.
And no further interest, so in terms of, you know, the financial well-being of the township, that's why. If, if anybody has any questions about kind of procedurally, you know, what Christie or Rebecca or Ryan or I are doing in terms of transitioning DDA activities, I'd be happy to talk about that, but this item is really about opening up a bank account that we are mandated to open.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the treasurer, deputy treasurer clerk and deputy clerk to sign paperwork in accordance with ordinance number 2025-08.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm gonna oppose this motion because the DDA hasn't been, I don't know if they still have, and I, I don't know if they've been disbanded yet, if they still have a bank account and have bills to pay. I listened to the August 12th Board of Trustees, and there were great points. You, the folks who voted for that made great points about its purpose and, and, and I appreciated those points. But since that time, a couple of things have happened. We've heard feedback from our residents and the business community, and we had an August 19th joint meeting at which, when it was the Planning Commission and the BOT, a lot of things came up that still need to be done for the, you know, section 14-19 determination of necessity and purpose, and, you know, lack of proper water and roads. I think proper roads have crosswalks. I think proper roads in this day and era have bike lanes. I think proper roads might have bumpouts so that pedestrians don't have to go so damn far across the busy road. I think proper roads might have a roundabout, and there are so many roads that we have in the DDA whose roads aren't where they should be in this day and age. I'm talking about Liberty, I'm talking about some, well, I've got the DDA map up, and so I'm talking about, I, I misspoke on Liberty. I'm talking about, thank you, northbound Wagner from Liberty, northbound, where there's commerce there, but there's going to be residential there, and there should be proper crosswalks there, maybe a roundabout, I don't know, not my department, but certainly bike lanes there. I, I'm talking about Wagner as it goes north, i- 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 you know, to, to 94. I, I, we've got, it'd be nice to go from the session room across the street to, to, I don't know, buy a cigar, I don't smoke cigars, without playing Frogger. So the, the, there's, there's, there's things we can do by way of better, and, and, and it says, traffic congestion. Traffic congestion is busing, traffic buses through the wave and through the A- ATA.
Can I ask you?
Energy.
Can I ask just one question about what you said at the beginning, John?
Why I'm gonna vote no on this?
Nope.
I, I, I.
No.
I would, I would prefer you yield until I'm done.
Sure thing, keep going.
So we've got lack of proper roads, we've got traffic congestions. Like I say, crosswalks on Jackson as we, as we develop westward. What are we gonna need to do at Baker Road as there's density at that new, at the, by the tractor supply? My apologies for not reading, pardon. So, so, so there are, there, is there gonna be a roundabout on Zeb Road and Park, which is in there? So there are things we can do that are within the scope, within the purpose, that we talked about wanting to do. And I'm talking about page four of roadway safety improvements, pedestrian bicycle safety, engineering solutions, traffic engineering, collaboration with road commission. Page five, transit opportunities, wave, A-ATA, and we've got traffic, I mean, there are things we could do. And I agree that we need a new and improved DDA, and I mentioned that. But there are still things, we could keep the existing DDA around while we spend lawfully within the scope and then, and then figure out how we want to transition, like another municipality to our east is doing on their DDA. So these DDAs need tweaking, but it's, I think we pulled the plug too soon until, until we spent lawfully within the scope for things that SIO Township needs. So that's why I'm gonna be voting. Frankly, I'm considering bringing a motion for reconsideration, unless it's gonna be absolutely futile, of that board, board, uh, you know, not right now, but at the next meeting, a motion for reconsideration to give the DDA a little breathing room to spend lawfully within a scope on things that we need yet and to come up with a, a different DDA, perhaps, that has a, an expanded scope, I yield.
May I speak?
Could we, trustee Brant has been, go ahead, trustee Brant.
Thank you. I would like to recall the comments of trustee Noel that said, talked about a board action by the majority is a board action. I would hope that trustee Riser would honor the, the majority and not push this proposal. Also, I'm astounded that a municipal attorney would vote against something that is legally mandated. I just don't understand how you justify your municipal attorney for Ann Arbor. I can't imagine that the senior counsel in Ann Arbor would allow you to go against state mandated laws. This is something we have to do. We're mandated. So if you want to vote no, that's your prerogative. I do not understand the ethics of it, but that's still your prerogative. But please honor the will of the majority of the board.
I, I did have a question.
Oh. Trustee Reed, did you have anything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I want to just go in the order.
Yes.
I'm the moderator, sorry.
So I just want to say, I look forward to future conversations of economic development, TIF ordinances, all of that. You know, I know we'll be starting some of that, you know, initially at the next meeting and as we get into capital planning and budgeting. So I'm not going to relitigate the decision. I think the, you know, return of taxpayer, when tax, when people go to the ballot and vote for Melages, they expect the money to be going where it's going to. It's an extraordinary power that this board has through one legislative action 37 years ago. We can divert taxpayer monies. We've got 3.7 million, which will go back to actually delivering services. When we tax ourselves, it's to provide services. No services were being delivered. I don't believe any more services could lawfully have been delivered. That's why they were veering into the discussion of going into closed session, of purchasing the movie theater, of paving roads that should have been funded by special assessments. We don't need to look backwards, but that is the truth. So we have. We don't need to look backwards, but that is the truth. So we have 3.7 million, which will go back to the units, to our libraries, to our conservation, to our parks, to all of this. And going forward, beginning in December, you know, we have 230,000 more that'll go to the district library, 23,000 to Dexter, to the county, to WCC, to open space, to public transit. And so I would just say, it's, I would object to the use saying that SciO is losing money. In fact, SciO residents are actually getting the services they voted to receive. It has been sitting in a bank account, not just for a couple of years, not just for the three, two or three years Ryan was on it, not just for the year that Jillian was on it, for years and years. So this was a long time coming, and I think it was the right decision. So, John, I look forward to having that policy discussion at the board in whatever form that takes. But I was struck, and I apologize for interrupting you, John, I shouldn't have done that. But I was struck by your question, is the DDA really still in existence if it has a bank account? So I want to say, and I would invite Mariah, please publicly correct anything I'm saying right now. The DDA was dissolved effective August 22nd. This is one of many steps we're taking as a township to have assumed all of their responsibilities, their one contract, their 2.3 million dollar liability, and everything else. So the DDA has been dissolved and is not in existence. Okay. Mariah's nodding in the affirmative. I would also say the DDA has a bank account, and what we have right now, and the reason why the statute requires this, our ordinance requires this, and our treasurer certainly was setting up this bank account. And again, mind you, this never would have come to the board table had I not been trying to be the transparent person that I am with that bank resolution saying it should be approved by the governing board. Ryan opens bank accounts regularly. It's part of his statutory duty. The people trust him to do it. But this board is questioning which bank account, or that he's opening a bank account, I, I think is a problem in itself. And if you want to do that, then, you know, you can have it out with Ryan or try to tighten up our investment policy. Right now, we have two volunteers named Jennifer and Gus, who are on a bank account that has millions of dollars in it for an organization that doesn't exist. It is unkind to leave our volunteers in that situation. It is not right. The organization does not exist. The account has millions. That's why it automatically comes into the township treasury instead of in the names of the treasurer, former treasurer and former chair of the DDA. So this is administrative. It's required, and there's frankly, no responsible alternative.
Trustee Noel.
You covered some of what I was going to say, but I wanted to clarify with Mariah. The DDA is currently dissolved as of
August 22nd.
Is that the correct date, August 22nd?
And, and, sorry to have been
That's okay.
But I think, I think one of the things that the clerk was trying to say, and she said it much more eloquently than I will, but this is, these are two separate issues. Your feelings about the dissolution of the DDA and this requirement, that the township, really the requirement is that the township take responsibility for the asset of the DDA. And this is the way we take the responsibility. And without finishing the process that was already approved in the dissolution, that's really complicated. You, you've got this account out there that the township is required to be responsible for and can't do that without this action. So.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Our options for the future are to consider a new DDA with a new goal. So this isn't, I mean, this isn't totally off the table. Well, I mean, we've got to go through this now and follow our statutes and do what we are responsible for doing. We all have a fiduciary duty, all of us. So I think it's a, it's a no-brainer right now, just to go through these steps. These are administrative steps. That's it. It's simple.
And there, if I could, Kathy, it's in our ordinance. It's actually our ordinance. We have ordained that the cash currently held by the DDA shall be transferred to the township treasurer. So I will just note that any vote against this is contrary to our current ordinance and would like to just note that for the record. Any plain and obvious reading of our current ordinance?
Trustee Noel, are you finished?
I'm done.
Okay. Well, here's something. So clerk Flintoff, you just said about the DDA capture and that when the voters vote, they vote for the money to go back or go to where the, yeah, please, don't interrupt me. And, but then trustee Noel, you said, oh, we can create a new DDA. Well, then we'll have a capture that takes away from those millages again. So that doesn't make sense. And the majority board action, there was a majority board action, and then two weeks later, that board action was rescinded. So don't tell me that the board cannot go back and vote on something and rescind it. So please, that is just an excuse. And regarding the bank account, yeah, I understand about what you're saying, but I'm not in agreement with the DDA being dissolved. So I'm not going to vote yes on anything that has to do with DDA. I understand about the ordinances and whatnot, but I can vote no for my own reasons. And I'm standing to my convictions that I do not agree that the DDA should have been dissolved, especially in the quick manner that it was. It's, to me, it is my opinion, it is harmful to the township, and we can't see that just, just yet. So.
Can I make a friendly amendment potentially in my opposing? It says to sign paperwork in accordance. You might want to say sign paperwork related to closing and opening bank accounts or?
Why don't I say as required by ordinance 2025-08 subsection five?
That's good.
I mean, these steps, these are not just administrative steps. What I'm reading from is in the adopted ordinance.
Not the statute.
Right. So I would say, I would make a friendly amendment, not just in accordance, let's be clear, as required by SciO Township ordinance number 2025-08 effective August 22nd, 2025. Anybody who goes to our website can see that.
I will accept that. And I would like to call the court.
So the motion was originally by Brand. Are the friendly amendments accepted by the secondary read?
Yes.
Roll call vote, please.
Brand?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
No.
Flintoff? Yes. Motion passes 5-1.
Okay, moving on to new business, possible, oh, one possible action, composting pilot program with Migraine, Michigan. And Christie, you created this, but
I did.
The
I created the agenda item at the request of
Yeah.
It's actually from the Planning Commission.
Yeah, the planning.
Hi, Jan.
Okay.
Would you like to share or begin, or how do you want to go about this?
Just a little bit of background. This was a project that the Environmental Sustainability Task Force has been working on for a couple of years, looking at different options. And there was, we looked at, one was Canton Township and how they had done a pilot program, Migraine, Michigan, and had a company help them run it and do the outreach. And their proposal was around 50 to 60,000 dollars, which we thought was a little too much. So we investigated doing it more ourselves, and Jeff Jackson, who, and Charlie Nielsen, were sort of the spearheading folks on that. And Jeff has quite a bit of background in doing zero waste events for races. And he uses interns and so forth. So we developed a proposal with Migraine, Michigan. And I want to thank the Commissioner and trustee Brand, who said, well, did you look at Denali and so forth? And, and we did. And it is very economical for Migraine, Michigan to come and pick it up. It does, Migraine, Michigan versus Denali, Migraine, Michigan allows you to use BPI plastics. So anyone at home or in the township hall and also in the bins can use liners. So that makes things much neater than having to wash out bins and so forth, because this will be collecting food waste and BPI plastics. We are going to not collect yard waste because residents already have multiple opportunities to have a collection of yard waste. It's also much easier to compost at home. So the goal would be to start this up, put information in the upcoming newsletter, launch it at the sustainability fair, which is October 5th, hope you all have. And hire, and whether this is through a consultant or an intern, how we can work that out. But the idea would be to have someone whose responsibility it would be to, as it's more of a bullet point job description, to do outreach, to do education, to track the number of participants, because this is a pilot. We'll run it for a year and evaluate it, but also do some outreach with businesses, particularly restaurants, to educate staff in participating. So hopefully SciO Township, our operations can become more zero waste. So that's the goal, and it's a relatively economical opportunity. And food waste is a, a big deal, and this creates a product, actually, that is beneficial to the environment, to our farms, et cetera. So it's very much part of a circular economy.
Oh. Is it okay? Start down here. Trustee Brand?
Yes, I support this effort, Commissioner. I did ask the question, our excellent volunteer, Tom Off, who tries to guide us on waste and recycling, had just alerted us of the facility, Denali, which Ann Arbor uses for food waste. So that just triggered in my head, could we take it there? It's closer. But it was clear when the numbers were shown to me that the rates for transit to a better facility were a very small portion of the total cost. So I think it's a good initiative. I think we saw something recently that 24%, I believe that percentage is correct, 24% of landfill is food waste, which is astounding when you think about it. So I support this effort, whether it's an intern or we somehow figure out how to use staff. And thank you for your work that you do on this, and please thank that committee. They do a lot of it.
I support it as well. I'm ready to move to the final motion unless there's more comments.
Well, I, I do. Do you have comments?
Question?
Sure, go ahead.
I do support this. But in the recommendation, it says the office coordinator and project manager recommend approval contingent upon clarification of several outstanding administrative criteria. What is, what are the, Chris, what are the planning administrative criteria?
Just deciding who's going to help in the evening, close the bin, and, you know, do we do intern versus a contract person versus a temporary?
Help me understand.
We weren't, because, because I was not able to work closely with Chris as of recently.
Oh, right.
We decided to put something like that in until he and I have a chance to.
Help, help me understand. Is the idea, and I don't know if I should ask, which one I should ask, is the idea that this would be like our recycling used to be Saturday from 10 to 4, you know, one, one, one Saturday a month, or every Saturday, or every other Saturday? I mean, is?
Yeah, with food waste, it makes sense to maybe what we were thinking of would be three days a week, because sometimes if it sits around, it's not very pleasant. So to, and the idea would be the bins would be closed up and locked because we don't want contamination, people dumping, et cetera. So it would require someone to open the bins, and the thought was, I could get further discussion, we thought somebody from utilities, when they came in, they come in earliest, so somebody could drop something off before, on their way to work. And then have, you know, maybe we switch it to Tuesdays, Thursdays, when people are here later, and, you know, somebody could close it. The other option would be just to have a consultant that would come. You want to inspect, you know, when you close it up, you want to look in and see if anybody's done some, you know, put something in there that doesn't belong. So those are some little administrative things. There are multiple options for that, that we need to work out. And I think the, the goal is, one, is this a pilot project that we feel it's worth it, and, you know, let administrative folks work out the actual functioning details of it. But the idea would be three days a week. We don't know what day Denali, or Denali, Migraine, Michigan would come and pick it up. The idea would be to, in the wintertime, as we're starting up, they have one pickup every two weeks, and that would increase as we had more participation and weather got warmer to every week.
So it's a, it's a township hall?
Yes.
And people bring their compost?
Bring their food waste and their BPI plastics and so forth. Yeah.
And better yard signs?
There'll be training. Yes. And everybody who participates needs to participate in a training, and there'll be a couple hybrid trainings, and then those will get recorded. So, yeah, people, yeah.
Is it a standard bid jan, or is it like a special?
64 gallon.
It's a regular part. Yeah.
Then Migraine provides.
Right, and they'll provide the liners. So when they, when they take the waste away, they'll put in the liners in the bins.
And they pick it up how often?
We're planning on every two weeks to begin with, and then as we gain more participation, it can go for one week.
One bin, two bin, we have?
We're starting with two bins.
Because we have no sense really until it gets used, whether people want to grab their compost to township hall. You said?
We did do, we did do a survey about a year ago, and there were about, I think it was 102, 106 people, and about 90 people were interested in participating in the pilot. So there was genuine interest in, in the township and participating in.
So this will be open to anybody or SciO residents or only people who have been, I mean, is this going to be like?
We can police, who don't, you know, who?
Because we found with the recycling, we were getting people from all over, and it cost us a lot more money than, but I'm, you said people were going to have to be trained. Is that the people who are like the interns who are going to be doing it, or the people who are going to be bringing the stuff?
It's pretty simple. It's just sort of like, what is, what is acceptable and what isn't?
Okay.
The hours it's going to be open? Yeah, pretty, pretty simple stuff. And the other extended training is all the other ways that you can compost. You know, what can you do with your yard waste? If you want to become a master composter, where can you get trained? It's, it's more about composting at large.
And there'd be no reason for people to bring yard waste because that gets picked up on the street if you want to do that.
Clerk Flintoff?
So I'm supportive of this. I had a chance to talk to Jan a little bit about some of the kind of implementation details, which I, I agree. And I would suggest if we do make a motion tonight, that, that I would support it with the amendment that we would direct the office coordinator, project manager to work with the ESTF chair. project manager to work with the ESTF chair on implementation. Um, because this cost here is just for the service itself. Um, I believe that um we would have a subsequent action likely come back to the board if we were going to create a part-time temp position or a contractor. I would say I, I, I'm opposed to intern, want to go with either a part-time staff or um consultant. I've also encouraged Christie to think about how we can use existing staff. That's why, you know, if we did it on a Tuesday night, you know, I mean, I can close it or seven AM, the utilities guys, or I can open it, whatever it is. Um, just to minimize cost. It is a pilot. Um, I think there's, you know, some things that can go wrong um with any pilot, but I think the benefits um potentially really outweigh any of that. I think the ESTF um did a really good job of researching everything, so I want to thank everybody. Um, they clearly considered um data, um best practices, did their homework to chase down good proposals. So thank you for that. I think this is well researched and uh very reasonable. So, so I support this tonight.
Christine O?
I'm gonna support it also. I did have a question. Have, have you identified who might be assisting with this, like which employees?
Well, um, we have, again, I haven't had a chance to really. Chris was gonna bring this forward and um I, I took over to help him out. And we just haven't had a chance to really sit down and chat about those details. I mean, Chris could help, I mean, possibly Jeff, that, those are the, those are the, those are the administrative details that we haven't quite.
I think the issue's gonna be Saturdays.
Saturdays. But I know that part of the pilot will have this part-time person that will do outreach. And we'll just, we'll just have to figure out the best way to move forward and see if we can get local employees that might want to step up and and help out.
And the ESTF said that they would volunteer to be backup too. So, but I think there's a, a multiple options.
Okay. Yeah, generally, are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay, um, of course, I am in support of composting. As I said earlier today, I built my own compost bin for the third time, just recently out of pallets. Um, my back is still screaming. But um anyways, um, I'm not comfortable with spending money on this program, especially when we don't know. Yeah, you had a survey. Um, I think it was last year, as you said, or two years ago. And to spend money on an employee or having employees do something more, we just have a lot going on in the township. If the EESTF, though, if they volunteered to oversee the whole program and if, especially for a pilot, and the pilot is for how long, a year? Is that really a pilot? If it's a year, it seems like it's pretty permanent. Um, but yeah, if they were willing to volunteer to oversee the whole program, somebody come in, open and close and, you know, and make sure I would be in support of it. But at this time regarding um using staff, and actually, I was, I had written down some notes earlier as I read through that if, um, you know, I know we have the newsletter that goes out quarterly, but if we had um this couple of months until spring, because it's gonna go by fast, as you, it's, it seems everything is. And just to get outreach and get more people so that they know that we, we're gonna have this program. And then to be, begin it in the spring when it's, people would want to go out more. Um, I would feel, yeah. I, I don't like when we, well, we're gonna, we'll figure out who the employee is or whatever, and then to spend money. And, and I don't want to see anybody in the utility department overseeing this because my municipal water and sewer that I pay for is supposed to only go to water and sewer, not employees to do things outside of that. So that's where I am.
And could I just clarify one thing?
I, I was part of that conversation with Jan and Christie. And just to be clear, the suggestion about utilities was simply unlocking it, you know, just as any one of us would.
Okay, well.
All a question, please, and thank you.
Sure. So the model motion is approve the composting pilot program. Authorize ex- execution of the general services agreement and approve expenditure of fourteen thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents from Fund one oh one dash seven zero one.
Could I?
Add um and direct the office coordinator and project manager to work with the ESTF chair on implementation details?
Sure.
Okay, I, I'll make that motion.
Support.
Roll call.
Okay. Oh, yes, go ahead.
Brandt?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
No.
Flintoff, yes. Motion adopted, five one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jan.
Thanks, John, for coming in.
All right, O two, possible action, consideration of the purchase of land or lease of real property up to the time and option to purchase or lease the real property is obtained. Clark Flintoff, do you have any? Anything more to this?
I, I'm ready to move the possible um motion.
If that, if we're ready for that?
Well, the, the suggested, suggested action, possible closed session to discuss the purpose of land or lease of real property as permitted by MCL fifteen point two six eight one D, the board may go into closed session by two-thirds majority vote.
And I would move that.
Report.
Roll call, please.
Can I ask your attorney one thing first? Um, I noticed that we have our land consultant as well as the chair of the LPC committee. Would, do we need to include in the motion that they be allowed to accompany us into that closed session?
You don't have to include, you can invite anyone you work to to close session.
Okay.
But you can.
All right, I guess I would be, I would ask that, so it is formal, that, that, that our land consultant, Barry Lannick, be uh allowed to accompany us and, and advise us and that uh Liz Weissman, the chair of the LPC committee, also be allowed into that closed session.
Support.
Um, it says to be roll call.
Brandt?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. We are now entering closed session at nine twenty-four PM. We'll be going into the front conference room and then returning here for open session.
Recording stopped.
Like a gene or something?
That's a bio-communicable plastic. I had to look it up because I didn't know what it is.
I mean, like, um.
Via, it's containers that break down these.
Yeah.
Recording in progress.
I'm moving, we come out of closed, Justin?
Is there support?
Support by Riser.
Uh, do we need a roll call vote for that? Is that?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, none?
We're at a closed session at nine fifty-nine.
Um, okay. So, Clark Flintoff, you have a couple of motions. Start with the first, please.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the expenditure of funds out of Fund two thirty-three, the Open Space Fund, for the purchase of a fee simple interest in property application number twenty twenty-five dash three for up to seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars plus the cost of survey, environmental and closing costs up to twenty thousand dollars.
Is there support?
Support by Riser.
Um, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Brandt?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Motion adopted, six oh.
Okay.
Uh, I'd also like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the expenditure of funds out of Fund two thirty-three, the Open Space Fund, for the purchase of a fee simple interest in property application number twenty twenty-five dash one for up to one point two million dollars plus cost for survey, environmental and closing of not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
Support.
A roll call vote, please.
Brandt?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Motion adopted, six zero.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to this, the addition, um, Christie, you had provided for us for, what do we call it, the Levine? No. I just put down Levine. I didn't write down the rest of it. Um, no, this is the, the access easement. Barry, if you could come up and provide us with some information, please.
So we have a request from Arthur and Marjorie Levine, um, who live just down the road on Marshall, uh, to abandon a twenty-foot-wide pedestrian access easement uh on their property. Um, the materials I was just handed don't show that.
Oh, I didn't give you. I gave you one of them?
You gave me one of them.
Okay.
So, uh, several years ago, we bought a thirty-four acre parcel from Mercer. And that included a very large pole barn uh toward the south side of the property. Again, this is just down the road here on Marshall. And uh after some discussion, we decided that that was too nice of a structure to knock down. But we didn't want to own it. And so we ended up selling it to the Levese's on eight acres of land. So we kept twenty-six acres of the thirty-four that we bought and then sold the eight acres um to the Levese's with a conservation easement on it. Um, so it cannot be uh developed beyond the agricultural use of the property. In that transaction, we also negotiated a, an access easement from Marshall Road to the twenty-six acres that we retained. And uh we've never developed it, but it was there, um, and is still um uh there as we speak. Subsequent to that, we purchased the property immediately to the east of that, since several years ago, again, from uh Virginia Loveland. It is uh now designated as the Marshall Reserve, not to be confused with Marshall Park on Marshall Road. Her late husband um was also named Douglas Marshall. And so she requested that the, the property be named in his honor. He passed away unfortunately in an automobile accident many years ago. Um, so we're calling it the Marshall Preserve. It has some frontage on Marshall Road. And so the, the access easement on the Arthur and Marjorie Levine property is no longer necessary. And he asked us to abandon that easement. In addition to that, so that's the request that's, that's on the table. Um, the document that I, I did get from Verona um shows um a difference, twenty-foot-wide uh pedestrian access easement um that uh was located on property that's owned by Arthur Marjorie's son, Mike Levine, and his partner, Erica Kemter. So we have the nature and nurture farm.
Yeah.
Further to the west, um, so about an eighty-acre parcel. We have a conservation easement on sixty of those eighty acres. And in doing that transaction, uh ten years ago, we also negotiated this, this twenty-foot-wide um uh pedestrian access easement and the, along the, the eastern boundary of, of, of Mike and Erica's property uh up to the uh, the northeast corner of their property. And it was long enough that it touched two other parcels, one of which was the Mercer property. Um, and another one, uh, and the other part of it is, is that it touched uh uh the property that, that Arthur and Marjorie ended up buying. Um, and the idea, and the easement on Mike and Erica's property was only applicable if we gained access from the east, which we did by buying the Mercer property, and the north, which is the Dexter Land Holding property, which we do not have access um for. And this uh access easement on the Levine and Kemter property was for ten years. And that ten years just expired a few months ago. So that easement has gone away. No longer have that ability, should we ever acquire the Dexter Land Holdings property or some part of that to extend a trail from Marshall Road all the way up to uh to, to Dexter. So the suggestion that I made to the LPC, um, and that they supported and, and recommended to you folks um is to, um, even though they're two different ownerships, it's the same family, that we agree to abandon the access easement on the Arthur and Marjorie Levine property. But uh to negotiate then a smaller access easement on the Mike Levine and Erica Kemter property, not the full twenty-foot wide by uh two hundred and fifty-four feet, but something much smaller. And I've talked to Mike a- about this, um, when I go on my annual monitoring duties. Um, he's favorable to something much smaller. It might be six foot by six foot, just so we can get from the property that we own, that we bought from Mercer sometime when we acquire, hopefully, uh access to the property to the north of that on the, on the Dexter Land Holding property.
Is that ADA compliant? We're giving up twenty for six, but is that gonna get us a pathway and ADA and all that kind of stuff? Is that?
It's not automatically ADA compliant.
No, it's six enough. I guess what I'm asking, six.
It could be ten by ten, it's, you know, something else. It could be twenty by twenty.
I'm not trying to get into ADA specifics.
No, that's a good question because it's, we don't have the specifics in front of us. On what the, what it would be.
It's to be negotiated.
So the, the request tonight is that the board would approve Mr. Lannick and me to negotiate the abandonment and acquisition of the easement.
So the acquisition of the easement would give us property to access to Dave Lutton's property.
Eventually, but it also gives us other access, correct?
To, and is it the portion that's currently proposed to be annexed?
No.
No, the.
I guess it would be a map.
Yeah, I'd love to be on map, too.
No, not that map. I said that, but this is what we're talking about here. Does anybody have a map?
I don't have that.
I mean, it's okay. I wasn't trying to put you on the spot.
The, the southern part of Lutton's property is a very nice woods. And he has consistently said that he would like to uh transfer that into the township's ownership at some time.
I think I have, I think I actually have.
By that, you mean sell it to us?
You know, a bit, I remember when they came in front, this is way before I was a trustee, just as a resident. Um, and there was a neighbor that was having some flooding issues with, yeah, and I can't remember if it was the Levese's or further down, but this doesn't affect the neighbors at all, right? Okay.
That's a mortgage on base of loan. This is on the east side of the same property, but that's the west side.
Okay. Well, apparently, whatever that issue was, it was taken care of. I just didn't want it to, like, reoccur.
Yes.
This is My Green Levese, Mike and Erica.
Right. And, and I'm sorry, so the easement would be around here?
So they could, technically, we could step across here to here.
Yeah, there, there is one point of, of contact between the Mercer property and Lutton's property. But we'd like to be able to.
Why is that? Um, I don't mean to be ignorant, but, but why is that important?
You can get to it. Shouldn't we buy it?
Because we can't get to it now, corner to corner.
Westward, kind of, maybe.
You can't.
No, technically, no, I mean.
I mean, technically, can.
You could leap across the corner.
Okay, but it's literally corner to corner. But it's literally corner to corner. It's not.
Yeah. So we'd like to negotiate with Mike and Erica something smaller than what they had previously agreed to.
What if we never buy that other?
Yeah.
Then it wouldn't apply.
Then it would, would not apply? Okay.
The, the easement that, that, that they would grant, Mike and Erica would grant, would be permanent, but again contingent on having access to, from the east and from the north.
Okay.
We've got the east. If we never get the north, we never use the, their access easement. If we do get the north, then we can go across the very corner of their property and, you know, connect everything together.
But this sounds like it's not an act, this is not a transaction that's going to involve a financial outlay?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, in one case, it's, it's an abandonment of an easement.
Okay.
And the other case, it's, it's the invance of an access easement, but with no funds.
We're reducing our easement in land, but we're increasing it in utility.
Correct. But, but, but the, the previous, the previous easement on Mike and Erica's property no longer exists because it only ran for 10 years. And that is now passed.
I have a question, Barry and Mariah. Is there any risk in this? I don't see it, but I just.
I don't see any risk.
No.
Risk.
Okay.
No, I mean, we, we may never use it, but that's okay because we're not paying anything.
Yeah.
And, and the easement that we're abandoning isn't something that we, is useful to us anymore anyway.
Yeah.
So we're not giving up something that can't work or something that be.
Going forward.
So these two, the two generations of these family, of this family, they're, they're basically saying that they would be willing to convey that small pedestrian easement in exchange. Is, is there any, and I hate to be blunt, but I mean, is this, is this, is this the exchange that we want? Is that the most valuable thing we might get from this family?
This is what we would like to get authorization to propose to them in a more formal way. So right now, we have requests from Arthur and Marjorie to abandon the easement on their property. And we would like to go to Mike and Erica and saying, can we get the easement on your property? And if so, we'd be happy to abandon the other one. And, I mean, Mike and Erica could say no. In which case, we would say, well, we're not going to abandon our access easement either. But I'll be everybody be friendly and say, that makes sense. Mike and Erica, I think, just want a much smaller footprint, you know, where, where the public could cross their property than 20-foot by 254.
But we don't know how much smaller. What, what are we looking for with that easement? Provided there was a day that we wanted to walk onto Dave Lutton's property, what, 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 I mean, kind of to John's point?
Yeah. It, it's, it's like enough room for a person to walk from the township property onto.
We ought to be able to put path.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
Eight or 10 feet wide, plus shoulders will probably 15 feet. It could be a triangle. It doesn't have to be a square, but we ought to be able to get a 10-foot path across.
It's not six feet, then?
No, not six feet.
Correct. Yeah, it's, it's something that I would contact, you know, Murphy about and, you know, figure out what we might be able to do and go with Mike and Erica, look at the property and see what's going on there.
But if it's going to be a path, I just, I just think we need to set our expectations, you know, to make sure we get what we want out of this and not six by six.
I mean, when you say it's going to be a trail, not a path.
What does that mean to you, David?
Not paid. In my mind, that's shit, not paid.
That's fine.
I mean.
Basically, not improved.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that that's the, I think that that's the point that, that Mr. Lonik is making, though, is that we still, it's a negotiation. So we need to figure out what it is that we are looking for, present it to the county and his partner and see what we can negotiate.
And you're going to bring it back for a second? So we're just all for us?
No, probably not bringing it back to you.
Okay.
Unless you think it needs to come back.
I would suggest, I would suggest to that, that we confer with our township engineer first before we start this negotiation. Because for, and, and maybe it's unnecessary, David, and I'm, I'm willing to be convinced, but, you know, for, just to make sure that we're, we're, whatever standard we're saying about a trail or a path, you know, we're all in agreement that we have enough space.
And I'm going to see, think he probably say, well, ask what, what is the park direction?
They might be mad at our stand-up.
We have, we pick that out later.
We have to, we have those dimensions in the, in the park's ordinance.
Yeah.
By definition, is it a sidewalk, a path, or a trail?
Yeah. So I just want to make sure, whatever we're going for, David, we get what everybody expects.
Can they wait two more weeks?
I don't think, yeah, there's no rush. There's no rush.
Okay, let's.
Well.
Well, and I'm not saying we have to wait tonight. I'm just saying if, if we could amend the motion that they would confer with the township engineer.
Okay.
You know, as part of it.
They will confer. Okay.
That would be my recommendation, David, just so.
Keep it moving.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a, with township engineers and to negotiate the terms. I'm just taking some of the motion from what the.
LPC?
Okay.
Yeah, I guess it was the LPC. So a motion to, took out from, by Redmond to trustees, to approve a request by Arthur and Marjorie Levine to abandon an access easement along the eastern boundary of the Levine property on Marshall Road in exchange for the conveyance of a small pedestrian easement in the northeast corner of the Levine Kemper property, and to request the township attorney, Mariah Fink, and Barry Lonik to confer with township engineer and then to negotiate the terms of the agreement? Or would you like support? Oh. Okay, so that would be backwards. Okay, is there support?
Yes.
Yep, there's support.
Oh, yes, you did. All in, it's, we don't, should we do a roll call or just?
We have to.
Yeah, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? Motion passes? Six zero.
Good man.
What, yep?
Thank you.
Um, you tipped it.
Yeah, it's there.
All right.
Thank you, Barry. Thanks, Mariah.
Yeah, thank you. We're to public comments.
Actually, one of our.
Oh, no, we're not. I'm sorry. I, yes, I wrote it in and I even just mentioned it to you. So this is oh four?
Yeah, apologies. I got this at 4:30. You may recall this has happened before, which is part of a ongoing issue the local clerks are having with our county clerk. I don't know if you're.
Go ahead with yours.
Oh, okay. I haven't handed anything out on that.
No, 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 this, the one that belongs to you. I'll just swap. Okay. You don't have any things. Oops, sorry.
So my apologies for the lateness. Quick review. In 2023, this board approved a contract with the county regarding countywide early voting, which set forth the when, the where, the how, and how much the county would be reimbursed for providing early voting for elections. The language is a little ambiguous about special elections and school elections. I think the county is maybe having buyer's remorse with their agreement. Their agreement is ending at the end of 2025, and I expect before the end of this calendar year-end to bring a newly proposed two-year contract. That said, what happened for the May election and what is happening right now for the November 5th election is a very late determination by the county to do early voting differently in the case of, or to, to not do early voting at all in May. And once again, the County Election Commission decided not to do early voting for November. And so I'm bringing it to you as a, as a formality. We have the right to not do early voting. It is not constitutionally required for a special election. It was the expectation that we would be doing it in partnership with the countywide agreement. I don't recommend we take on the cost and expense ourselves at this late juncture. The Election Commission just made this decision last Friday, and we were just informed of it at our meeting this morning. Because I don't have the authority to amend a contract amended by this board, I asked the county clerk to produce a letter with a proposed agreement to amend the agreement for election services between Wasna County and Syo dated October 19th, 2023, to simply amend the scope of the agreement to accept the special election of November 4th, 2025. And with that explanation, I would ask that there's any questions or a motion to approve the proposed amendment.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
So, and I don't have any handouts, but I can hand this down.
Yes, of course.
County has reversed its position on early vote.
For this elect, for this election only?
I thought you said also for November.
So this November, this special November 5th, 2025 election. So we will continue early voting for all state and federal elections. We are currently negotiating how we will deliver early voting for the special elections. And I expect to bring forth another two-year contract, which has some different terms, so we don't have to make this decision election by election.
So this will, will this impact the November election or is this after that?
It's, yeah, it's for this November 5th, 2025. Basically, for, for that election, the County Election Commission said they are not going to provide early voting. So the city of Ann Arbor, so you talk about equity, we start getting into issues. The city of Ann Arbor is providing early voting for the city of Ann Arbor's voters who are voting on the WISD question. The rest of the county would not be providing early voting.
Okay.
And the, you know, I'm, I have confidence we're going to, you know, serve our voters. They are, you know, very, you know, good at using absentee. I'm going to be open two weekends before, do everything we can. So I don't think it's going to affect turnout here, but it will be different, that the city of Ann Arbor will have early voting, the rest of the county won't.
And we're going to have some too, or? Are you going to play it? We're going to have some as well?
No, this under, which is not, excuse me, I meant to provide absentee ballots.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Excuse me.
So this would just be saying, yes, we agree to the amendment of the contract to kind of let the county off the hook because they made the determination that they're not going to do it. Well, and it's a good question. It's, it all, you know, there's 20 of us on a intense Teams call today about that. Well, we would do it because the alternative is that we could decide to have early voting and outlay all of the costs for it, which we might want to do because it's a special election and we can get reimbursed for some of those, though the county has already talked about the election costs with WISD and has given them some assurance that it would not include the cost of early voting. Further, with the development of early voting, unlike the pilot we did in November of 2023, they're now using and starting to require the ballot-on-demand printers, which are, you know, tens of thousands of dollars. It's some equipment that only, the Bureau of Elections. So the technology, yeah, the state, the technology that they use at the early voting sites is now requiring the ballot-on-demand, which is the expensive equipment that only the county has. So it's, it's become, I am more dependent on the county than I was two years ago to carry out early voting.
They're going to have early voting with the county. You're going to have to go to the LRC.
No, there will be no voting, early voting at the LRC. The county has said, no, they are not providing early voting for this election.
See, I actually mean we're not going to charge.
I don't know that they promised, but that is the understanding. I have the draft minutes. And, and the, to the County Election Commission's credit, you know, there were some, of course, you know, very good reasons about why. I mean, a week before, they passed a resolution stating that they were going to provide five days of early voting, and we had a whole plan. Even with the HVAC plan, Christie's been awesome, you know, if we needed to be a site. One week later, they came back, rescinded that resolution and stated no early voting. Now, they were concerned that, one, it wouldn't be a good use of taxpayer dollars, and I think there's merit to that when you look at the, the turnout. I do think five days would have been reasonable instead of the full nine. Also, there were some equity issues because the Ypsilanti Township has never agreed to be part of the countywide agreement. And so the county, countywide, was going to do early voting. YPSI Township wasn't going to do early voting. So the County Election Commission, there was some sense that it would not be fair to have everybody provide early voting except YPSI Township. So I can't speak to all their reasons, but that's, that's what I understand. So, you know, our county clerk, Keston Baum, Judge O'Brien, and our county treasurer, Sharp, all agreed to not have early voting. So again, I don't think it'll hurt voter turnout here in Syo. From a process point of view, it's, this is not something I want to have to bring to this board at the last minute, but it's also a, it's pretty disruptive to the election preparation process to make this decision election by election. So what I'm advocating for in our new agreement is that we just set forth what we're going to do for the next two years with some specificity.
Are you making your motion?
I would make a motion that. Yeah, because it's a contract that this board entered into with the county. I would ask, I would make a motion to approve the proposed amendment to the countywide early voting agreement.
I'll support that.
And it's vetted by legal? Or will be?
It's not been vetted by legal. I can say subject to legal review.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was fresh off the press.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None?
Thank you, everyone.
There you go. Yes, public comments. So, wow, we cleared out the room.
First, so.
Sure. All right, so.
People actually vote in the early election, depending on what election, obviously.
Oh, 15% of our voters vote early.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we still in, like, local, only getting about 26, 28% of the people voting?
More like, well, more like in the last 2023 election, it was over 30. Yeah.
It's going a little low.
It's going up.
I don't understand people who don't vote, but it's just my opinion. Then I.
So it's up to five minutes.
That thing that was on Nextdoor, because the guy actually figures out all the cubic feet of how much water costs in Ann Arbor. He has a business in Ann Arbor, and he has a business here. And then, then he makes a joke, maybe we should get a tank or start selling our water here.
I will be reviewing that post tomorrow.
To let you know that it is very expensive for people with children, and even when they're not watering their lawns and, and all that, we need to look at the water. And I know we're depending on Ann Arbor for a lot of this, and I know they've had to do a lot of updating with the PFAS and all that. And then sometime, let's talk about the PFAS. I, I have that M part that I follow. And then here's my homeowners association. That I don't belong to their porto. My, my own protest. But I occasionally get some of these. I just send them out on my email. And it talks about, greetings, neighbors, blah, 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 walk through, about the roads. We continue to have discussions with the Syo Township Roads Committee on possible partnership on local roads funding options. With these ongoing discussions, which I watch every, no, I didn't watch our last road committee, but I watch every one of them. And I have not heard any discussion on Park Road. And we have this wonderful open meeting article that I'm not going to bother to read. I, I watch too many of these things and read too much news in general. I'd like to know what that is all about because my.
Because my homeowners association, and they can get, and Cheryl gets flack here too. Uh, when, when the whole Park Road with Hathaway, Supervisor Hathaway and the wonderful letter that I got from Mr. Merdy saying, well, let's work this out of your office with certain people. Um, I don't live on Park Road. I got an issue with Park Road. Park Road, first off, I don't want to cut all those trees down. And they can do something with putting that on the other side of that drainage issue. And we need to start informing people, don't cut your oaks until too hard freezes. We're losing all of our oaks to oak wells. And not only that, it'll be right in their backyard. And the same thing with trail woods. They're in a hundred-year flood plain. They cut down, there is, they let them get their, uh, their backyard. Now, I have the woods right behind me, and it's always going to be that way. It isn't for me that I talk about these things, but I seem to get the flack. Uh, and, and it's, you know, people had dirt. I couldn't, my, my windows for five years in the back of my house because of the dust. And I went over and I shone man over there, hey, Arizona, we, we water this stuff down. And when they're going to start doing all these projects, and I, I'm still, my neighbor who should have left his drainage, he doesn't even own it. When you put grass in there, it doesn't absorb, it's like thirty percent less absorption of water. So I want us all to be thinking about these wetlands, like the, I'm glad you did the Piper Ridge or whatever. But I'd like to know, I don't want to the old Syo with discussions with some, even with subcommittees, like I like stuff where everybody can know about it and put their opinions. You may not get your way or whatever, but, uh, I don't want to see that change. I like the Zoom. And I like that you don't have to say who you are on Zoom now too, because it'll encourage. Some people don't want to have their name, or they make up a fake one to get their Zoom. Anyway, thank you very much. Thank you.
So township, Russell. Uh, first of all, Jess, uh, thank you for sharing the, um, issue about ICE, what you witnessed with ICE. Number one, I didn't know they were active in Ann Arbor. And that's very chilling. I'm sorry you had to witness that, but that's good that the community knows that ICE is active in Ann Arbor. Uh, that, um, I find that very concerning. Um, Kathleen, I agree with you that legislation is part of the solution. Uh, the purpose of my comments was to share what I did to empower myself so that I don't find myself in a position, uh, in an emergency where I can't help. And, um, and I think that, uh, bringing the community together to do classes and training, um, helping us figure out how to take care of one another better, exposing residents to how great our supervisor, our, our, our firefighters are, um, but also, uh, it empowers the people who are taking the classes, and we can all, uh, think about things in terms of how we can help one another, and that's an empowering thing rather than a stifling thing. Um, I apologize for interrupting your comments about, uh, the, what you're doing for the elections, that the trauma kits and the, um, the blood stop stuff. Uh, so yesterday, um, I was talking with Chief Hood, and he let me know that we can get Narcan. Uh, uh, they're, they're now, I've got the, uh, the leg stick, um, injections, but now it's a nasal spray. And behind the counter, um, at Township Hall, they have these kits, and it's, it's two nasal sprays for Narcan. And we can all put it in our cars and, uh, and it's free to anyone who asks for it, so that I highly recommend these. The speakers, I think the issue with the speakers, uh, um, during the Zoom portion, the rear speakers were working for Jonathan and Pat. Uh, when they were speaking, it was coming through there. But when it's the microphones here, I'm not hearing it in the back of the room. So I think there, whatever the settings are is one thing, but also I think there must be an amplifier that's driving these, uh, these speakers. And if we can turn up that amplifier, not turn up the microphones, but turn up the amplifier that's powering the speakers, that might fix that problem. It might just be that they're turned down back here and they're getting the front ones. So my understanding of food waste, uh, we compost, and we only compost vegetable waste because my understanding of food waste is that protein waste attracts rats. And so one thing that's going to have to be, uh, included in this, um, uh, the composting, um, project is that it's the, the, the area is going to have to be vermin-proof. That, um, squirrels and mice and rats can't get into it. And you're going to have to make a decision about whether you want, uh, just vegetable waste or, um, vegetable and protein waste. So that's, that might be an issue. Uh, thank you for denying the KFC application. I was surprised that all of you made such a definitive vote to deny, and I think you saved the board, the planning commission, and the developer time in sending it back to the planning commission. So now the developer will probably bulldoze trees and install wells on his property in their by right development with this property. There's a component of that process that I'm concerned about. The cyodioxine studies have proved that we have now have at least fifty-three poisoned wells north of the highway. One of those wells is on Elizabeth Road, directly adjacent to this property. I am concerned about a developer drilling wells right in the path of dioxine. What can the do, what can the board do to safeguard future homeowners on that site? So I think that will have to be something you guys will have to consider in, in future developments there. And then lastly, uh, Kathleen, you, uh, questioned John's professionalism in your response. Everyone on this board has a right to have an opinion and vote based on, uh, their beliefs and their opinion. It's not your place to question his professionalism on how he bases his decision. I believe you owe John an apology. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
Thanks, Christie. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak a public comment? Please raise your Zoom hand. Uh, Pat Stein. Go ahead, Pat.
I wanted to read something that, um, comes to mind again tonight. It's the definition of collaboration. And I bring that up because Supervisor Carrie, on one, one occasion at the beginning of meeting, has said she would just like the board to collaborate. I don't know that she really understands the meaning of that word, so let me advise you. The best definition of collaboration is the process of two or more people or organizations working together to complete a task or achieve a shared goal. It involves combining skills, knowledge, and resources, communicating effectively, and sharing ideas and information to produce better outcomes than individuals could alone. So please keep that in mind because this evening's behavior Supervisor Carrie was, I don't know, I don't know what it was. It certainly wasn't collaborating. It was immature and very unprofessional. Please do better. And trustee riser, I have no words to comment my feelings, to convey my feelings on your behavior tonight. I would like you to consider which position you're in when you're on this board. Are you a member of the board? Or are you a, um, are you an attorney for the city of Ann Arbor? So thank you all. Good job, most of you, and I appreciate it. Good night.
Thanks for your opinion, Pat.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
That stuff is Jeff Jackson. Go ahead, Jeff.
Good evening.
Hi, Jeff.
Hi. I'd like to thank the board for passing the, the compost project. I'm really looking forward to it. Food waste is such a big, uncaptured part of the waste stream, and I'm really excited that our township is going to be able to make a dent in that. Um, actually, uh, food waste makes up closer to one-third of the municipal.
Would you please, um, mute Pat? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, Jeff.
Yeah, so actually, organics is closer to one-third of the total waste stream, so it's a really, it's really untapped in most areas. I, I just wanted to comment on, on Rob's comment, and yes, it can be, vermin can be a concern if food waste that contains protein in particular is, is left exposed. All the food waste collected here will be in a container with a lid inside a enclosure. Uh, that will also be contained. Uh, just to let you know, in my business, I have had very similar carts, sixty-four gallon or ninety-six gallon carts full of food waste in my driveway temporarily before I take them to the compost center. I've been doing this for ten years. I have never had a break-in from raccoons or squirrels or rats or anything else. So as long as the waste is properly contained, hopefully that will not be an issue because it won't be exposed. The, the only danger might be if somebody comes and dumps it without putting it properly in the cart, and I'm hoping that this, uh, the shed that we have for it will prevent that. So just wanted to allay that concern based on my experience. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Anyone else?
Uh, anyone else would like to speak a public comment? Please raise your Zoom hand. There are no hands raised.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn at ten forty-one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there a second?
Oh, yeah. Oh, there was.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, wait a minute. No, you motioned it, or you, sorry.
I did.
Oh, you did support it.
I did.
Wait.
Very quietly.
Yeah, okay. Well, all in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
All right, good night.
They were, they were voting too quickly.
Recording stopped.